Good evening, and welcome to the Select Board meeting of, what is this, April 18th? Sorry, I'm a little discombobulated because we're in the community room of the police station tonight, and it's, our starting time is 6:36 as we call ourselves to order. So, on our agenda tonight, we'll start with opening announcements, opening remarks, announcements, and agenda review. One thing I will mention at this point, and we'll come back to it though, is in our, in our agenda, we always have a place that says topics. The chair did not recently anticipate forty hours, forty-eight hours before the meeting. We do have a topic that we'll cover under that. We'll do it later in the meeting. We got a memo from our town council. I guess we should get in having the same town attorney to make sure there's no confusion there regarding some, some things around transition and, and, you know, things that can be taken up or not taken up underneath by town meeting and those questions that have arisen around what does it mean by essential and necessary, et cetera, et cetera. So, we'll talk about those very briefly tonight, just to sort of daylight that, that memo from our, our council, and then we'll take it up more fully next Monday night, but we will have a little bit of a conversation about it tonight as far as just initial reading of it, which, like I said, we and the town manager actually only received yesterday. So, that's one thing I'll, I'll make you aware of. Other than that, are there any other changes to the agenda additions, anything else that anyone needs to mention? The other thing I'll mention at this point, if there's not, when we get into taking up positions on annual town meeting warrant articles, under Article A, the regional school budget, the elementary school budget, and the school district assessment, I'm an employee of the schools and therefore I will step back, I will literally step back, but I will recuse myself from the conversation, and I'll ask Mr. Steinberg to chair the meeting during that time without objection, and we'll confirm that when we get to that point, but just as a heads up that that will be something that I step away from, and so it'll be a, a different conversation because I'm not a part of it. So, let me begin with public comment. Anything that people want to talk to in public comment not related to an item on the agenda? Things on the agenda we'll take up as, as they come up, but if it's not related to items on the agenda, then now's the time to, to share with us your thoughts. Mr. Weiss, do you want to join us?
Joyce.
Yeah, you can come, come to the table.
There's no mic here.
There's no mic. There's one on the camera, I believe, so just take your name and tell us, just as a general reminder, not that you need this, but just as a general reminder, we usually try to keep our remarks confidential.
I promise.
Okay.
I gotta go. I'm Jerry Weiss, Precinct Eight. I guess it's gonna, my comment is gonna touch into this later item. I hope that's okay. I just wanted to add, add something to the whole conversation about town meeting, and there are efforts right now made by several people to try to hold a community conversation in the near future, to try to bring the community back together, to heal some rifts, and, and so what I was gonna say is I very much appreciate attorney, the town attorney's comments about, basically, I mean, there are exceptions, but basically saying that the show should go on as is, and I appreciate that because I think efforts to, to squash that will greatly interfere with the community effort to, to find peace among the warring tribes, and I think it would be unnecessary ranker could develop if there are strong efforts to really contain town meeting away from the, the warrant that's been issued. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
Yes.
We'll go here, and we'll come back over there. I saw that answer, not any other reason.
I don't mind waiting. Thank you. It's interesting to be on this side of the table in this room. I've spent hundreds of hours. I'm gonna appreciate this public comment opportunity. I'm, as I've emailed you, circulating a petition for a special town meeting about a really critical matter that is extremely related to implementing the charter in the best possible way, and a matter that I believe is routine. So, the interesting use of the word routine, when we're in the middle of totally changing our government and absolutely nothing is routine, I invite you to think about the concept of routine in terms of what are the routine things that have to happen in order for this charter to be implemented in the best way, in a way that reflects Amherst values, in a way that's gonna help give everyone in town a chance to participate equally in the charter. The two key components of my proposal are a limit to $250 contributions from individuals to the candidates, and two to limit to 250, right now it's $1,000. The same limit for the governor of, the governor of Massachusetts as for the council of Amherst. It's way too high. 250 for independent expenditure groups from individuals. We need to address this problem immediately rather than hand it off to the council, which will have been elected without these limits and will be very unlikely to want to change the system that brought them there. This is the Wild West, and we're in this crazy SCOTUS Supreme Court situation where it's really extremely important that people in this country and in this town who care about giving everyone an equal chance to run for office speak their voices. I'm not doing this, though, because it's important nationally, although it is. I've worked on this issue for 20 years at the national level. I'm doing it because of that work, I see how crucial this is for Amherst, that we put in place routine rules that are likely to allow everybody who wants to run for office to, to get to make contributions to do so. It's very hard to predict how much these races will cost. Looking at other towns, it's between $5,000 and $10,000, but much higher when the lot's at stake. And if you look at the possibility of people running for the council, which is going to appoint the zoning board with, and then make zoning proposals back to the very same council that just appointed them, there's an awful lot of interest on the part of people who have zoning concerns to make sure certain people get elected. Again, it's the Wild West. We do have one political party in Amherst already. They have, they're developing a slate platform. Candidates on the slate will be expected to support the platform. I look forward to the, reading the OCPF Office of Political, Campaign and Political Finance report on how they choose to identify themselves, but we really need to pay attention to this. It's highly urgent, and in the context of changing our government, I, it's routine. This is a routine thing you should do when you're changing your government, is to implement changes in how people are elected so that everybody gets a chance to run. I can't think of anything more urgent and central and routine than this in implementing the charter. And I know it's not on anybody's agenda, and I, I'm not, I can see, I read the legal memo, the letter, so I'm still doing it because I think it's so important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, we're at Precinct Two. I'm just asking a question. If I, if I wish, will, will there be opportunity, when will there be opportunities for public comment in this agenda? That is to say, before Item Four, and then before Item Five, and then before Item Six, or before Item 4A, before Item 4B, and so forth? What is the plan? Or should I speak to any, anything that's on the agenda right now, or should I wait till it comes up? That's my question.
You should wait till it comes up.
And it'll come up.
And we'll, we'll probably, when we're finished with public comment, we'll go probably right into 4A.
Thank you.
So, I don't think we have to pick up licenses or consent calendar till later, and so, is there any other public comment? All right. So, given that, we'll take up our action discussion items. The first one is take positions on special town meeting articles. The special town meeting is scheduled for 6:59 on April 30th. Article One is an act to hold a special election. As was required by the Charter of the Past, is that we have a special town meeting and ask the question of, of town meeting of whether or not to place, well, seek a request from the legislature to allow us to have our first election for council members concomitant with the November election. And so, that is the article that is before us on that, on that special town meeting warrant. Do you have anything that you need to add to that?
I do not.
Okay. And so...
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
It's really hard for us to see each other.
It is. It is an odd arrangement.
Before we move to the public, I'd just like to say something, but maybe you'll cover it, so I'm sorry to interrupt, but since Mr. Slaughter didn't have anything he needed to tell us about this.
Go right ahead.
I just wanted to mention that, of course, this was in the charter that was voted, and so...
That's right.
This isn't just a thing that we made up. This is word for word what is exactly in the charter that was voted, and town council has advised us this is the format to do it in, and we talked briefly about what night to do it on in terms of town meeting, and we realized that, given our legislature's history of special legislation and how quickly that sometimes happens, we wanted to do it at the first opportunity, given the 14-day notice for special town meetings. That kind of put us right there at April 30th, which is the 6:59 time to do it, so that then we can, after we finish the warrant, dissolve it, and then we can send it away the next day, rather than having to wait till later.
Correct.
Very hard to hear.
So, I'll, I'll repeat that, just for the sake of the audience here. Basically, part of the reason we, we set the meeting, the special town meeting to be when we did was because it will, by being a special town meeting as opposed to putting it on the regular town meeting warrant, that meeting will close and its actions will become final, and therefore, we can then pass that legislation, you know, that request for special legislation to our legislators almost immediately. If not, we have to wait until annual town meeting finishes before we can send it to them. And so, it's more a question of timing than anything else, and so, we wanted to put the question in front of people. So, that's why it's at 6:59, so it essentially is immediately before our annual town meeting. It gives town meeting an opportunity to vote on that issue, and if they approve, then that request to the legislature will be made as soon as we can, and that gives the legislature its time to do its work and, and potentially allow us to hold those elections on those, on those dates in November, and I believe in the primary in September. Are there any other questions or comments by members of the Select Board? I think there are some folks, I presume there are folks here to talk about this, so I, before we get into that, I just want to make sure any other members have anything else they want to offer. If not, I'll recognize you to speak to it first.
Thank you. My name is John Bonifaz. I'm a constitutional and voting rights attorney living here in Amherst. I'm the founder of the National Voting Rights Institute, which I directed for more than a decade before becoming its general counsel, and I'm the co-founder of Free Speech for People, which I have directed since 2010. I'm here tonight to speak about the proposed act for the state legislature in Article One of the upcoming special town meeting on April 30th. This proposed act would violate the federal and state constitutional rights of student voters. With the presence of UMass Amherst, Amherst College, and Hampshire College, the town of Amherst is home to thousands of college students who account for close to half of the town's voting age population. During the course of constitutional litigation against the town in the 1970s around the student voting question, the town, via its select board, adopted a policy, quote, "to hold municipal elections on dates that afford all registered voters, an opportunity to personally participate therein by casting ballots at the polls." Article One proposes state legislation, which would establish an election calendar that includes nomination papers for candidates for the town council to be available on June 1st, 2018, and to be returned by August 1st, 2018, a time period when the vast majority of students are away for the summer and thus unable to participate in this process as voters and as candidates. This exclusion of student voters from the process for nominating candidates for the town council would violate their federal constitutional rights under the Equal Protection Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment and under the Twenty-Sixth Amendment. In addition to implicating students' federal constitutional rights to the franchise, the election calendar in this proposed legislation also implicates students' rights under Article Nine of the Massachusetts Constitution, including their rights, quote, "to be elected," end quote. The town of Amherst should not be engaged in excluding nearly half of our voting age population from a critical part of our election process in violation of the U.S. Constitution and the Massachusetts Constitution. The Select Board has a responsibility to help ensure that Amherst not disenfranchise student voters in this way, which could subject the town to unnecessary and costly litigation. The Select Board should not recommend Article One to the special town meeting, and you should exercise your leadership in urging town meeting members to reject this unconstitutional measure. The right to vote is the bedrock right of our democracy. We must ensure that this right is protected for all eligible voters in Amherst. And I have a copy of my statement for each of you.
Please hand them to Mr. Steinberg. They'll pass them out there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. If you would, please.
Thank you. My name is Sarah McKee, and I have a letter from five attorneys who live in town to the members of the Amherst Select Board. We write to express our deep concerns about Article One, an act to hold a special election. Article One asks town meeting to authorize the Select Board to file with the state legislature a request to hold a special election on November 6th, 2018. The election calendar in Article One and in Section 10.7 of the new charter effectively excludes many student voters from the process of nominating candidates for the town council. The timing of filing of nomination papers and running in a primary largely takes place when most students are away for the summer. Nomination papers for council candidates will be available from June 1st, 2018, with a return date of August 1st, 2018, and a primary schedule will take place largely during summer break. The state primary will be held on September 4th, the first day of new classes for Amherst College and UMass Amherst, and the day before Hampshire College classes start. Article One and the new charter will prevent students participating in the council election process as voters and as candidates. As you know, students have constitutional rights to vote under both the U.S. Constitution and the Massachusetts Constitution that include a right to run for political office. Article Nine of the Massachusetts Declaration of Rights states, quote, "All elections ought to be free, and all the inhabitants of this commonwealth, having such qualifications as they shall establish by their frame of government, have an equal right to elect officers and to be elected for public employments," unquote. The Amherst Select Board correctly has a policy not to interfere with these rights, and, quote, "to hold municipal elections on dates that afford all registered voters, an opportunity to personally participate therein by casting ballots at the polls," unquote. And that is from the First Circuit's decision in 1975 in the case of Walgren versus the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Amherst. College students are vital and welcome members of our community. If members of the Select Board vote to recommend to town meeting that it adopt Article One, they will be voting to violate town policy and the federal and state constitutional rights of these students. Any town meeting member voting in favor of Article One will do the same. This would not only be fundamentally wrong, but it also could subject the town unnecessarily to litigation. We urge the Select Board to carefully examine these critical issues and to vote not to recommend Article One. Thank you for your time and your attention. And those signing this letter are Janet McGowan, Laura Quilter, John Bonifaz, Julia Ruschmeyer, and myself. Thank you very much.
Are there others that wish to comment on, on our discussion of Article One and act to hold special election?
Very briefly.
Please.
My name is Maggie Angeles. I was looking at the charter, and there are alternative dates that are set up if the special election date doesn't happen. My one concern about those alternative dates would be that the election would be January 24th, which would still be within, I believe, winter break for several of the colleges. So, but there are those alternative dates, and I think it's Section 9, 10.9.
Is there other public comment relative to this particular article on special town meeting warrant? Ms. Brewer?
I'd just clarify, Mr. Slaughter, is, is it accurate to say that we will, once public comment is finished here, we will then deliberate amongst ourselves, we will not reopen it, and this is not a die-down, and so...
Right. I mean, generally, we take public comment and then we, we have our, our debate at that point, so if you have something to say, now is the time.
I have 15 seconds extra statement.
Yes.
I do want to just address one other matter that Ms. Brewer addressed, which is, yes, the voters voted for this charter, but the voters do not have the right to disenfranchise other voters. And so, despite the fact this was passed, no matter how popular a measure may be, if it is unconstitutional, that does not mean that the Select Board or the town meeting should advance it. So, I, I appreciate the point about it being passed, but that doesn't take away the constitutional concerns.
Last chance. Okay. So, I think we've heard the public comment relative to this article, so members of the Select Board, do you have comments or, or suggestions to share with each other about this? Ms. Brewer?
I would like to start by saying that not only KP Law looked at this, you know, our regular, now we have to start remembering to call them...
Attorney.
Attorney rather than council. I'll just say KP Law until we hear somebody else. KP Law worked with this, but more importantly, the Attorney General's Office approved this. This went to the Attorney General's Office and the DHCD before we were allowed to put it on the ballot. So, while I am familiar with the Walgren case and the discussion around it, because it's come up several times since I've been on the Select Board, I don't feel it applies here, and I don't believe that if the AGO would have thought about that too. There's also the fact that, of course, the primary date is not established by us, it is established by Secretary Galvin, Secretary of the Commonwealth. So, just as we are, I'm not sure why we are disenfranchising local elections when we're not disenfranchising people from voting or participating in the election of a state rep for this particular area. Perhaps people are thinking that students would go home and participate in the state rep for their home home, but when it comes to the Amherst state rep, obviously, they're on a similar calendar. So, given that there are 25 signatures required associated with district representation and 50 required, I don't see that as a high bar that would be difficult for anyone to obtain in terms of meeting the student population here. So, if a student, which I very much hope at least one student runs in this first election, that they only need that number of signatures, so having the majority of students not be here and though a substantial number do stay all summer, does not feel compelling to me. And I do object to saying that I'm taking away people's rights by recommending this because it's been our understanding in the past, associated with the Walgren case, that while we need to be sensitive to election dates, it's incredibly complex, as was mentioned by a previous speaker, in terms of avoiding breaks, avoiding winter break, avoiding summer break, and then the, the actual length of time associated with nomination papers. So, I am not compelled to believe that that is more valid in this particular case because the election date does still allow for student participation, although it is certainly unfortunate that the primary is so early on September 4th. Nobody's happy about that, but that's what the secretary decided. And the November election makes sense, and if we say that this is a bad idea and therefore we need to go with the alternate plan, so if town meeting doesn't pass the special legislation, we need to go the alternate plan, I don't see that it's any improvement. And so, I'm concerned that this wasn't raised more and not written down more carefully during the Charter Commission hearings, when this was discussed numerous times, but the fact that the charter did have to be sent off to be looked at by all those bodies concerns me that now that would suddenly no longer be valid, so I'm not finding the case compelling, and I feel like we need to recommend it to town meeting. Is it possible for it to speak a little louder?
We'll endeavor to. We don't have our amplification that we're used to having, which is, you know, a convenience of town, of the town.
People are welcome to move closer, too. I think you want to push things up toward us further, but it's difficult because we're supposed to talk to each other, not to you.
Right.
But you're supposed to be able to hear us, so it's like this complicated process.
Other comments from my colleagues? Because I could take up the topic as well, but I'd want to give Mr. Steinberg and Mr. Wald a chance to weigh in as well.
I did look at the alternative dates and the questions and thought about that, too. University of Massachusetts, which has the largest number of students, is the only one I had time to check, and the first day of classes for the second semester begins January 22, which is the day after the Martin Luther King holiday. Mr. Wald may have additional information about other...
Here's Amherst, and there's Hampshire.
Okay. Hampshire is the 23rd. Amherst College is the 28th, according to information done by college academic calendar. So, an election on the 24th, which is a Thursday, would be just after or just before for one college, first day of classes, and one of the things that students who are very interested in local elections but are away for the holidays, some stay in town, but the ones who are away would not have the benefit of being able to fully engage in all of the campaign information that is out there that eats up in the last weeks before election. So, I think that this is gonna be a challenge in any event. We need to give the best advice we can to town meeting. The way that the charter is written requests that town meeting submit this to the legislature and the legislature enact it. If neither happens, then I assume it automatically goes to 10.9, which was cited earlier, and which says, shouldn't act outlined in Section 10.8 or similar, act not be elected, the first election of town counselors under this charter, and then it goes on to the 24th and gives additional dates. So, I think we need to give the best advice we can to town meeting, but town meeting and legislature ultimately will make decisions as those bodies determine.
I think most things have been said. I think that we're all sympathetic to the question of student voting and have been, but I think Ms. Brewer makes some compelling points. If the state primary takes place, then no one raised objections about that, and it's late to raise objections here, so I'm not quite sure why this is coming in at five minutes to midnight.
That's right, after you said...
I'm not sure why this is being, also, why it's being raised now. I'm not sure why this is being, also why it's being raised now and wasn't raised in the Charter process by people who were part of the Charter process or had the chance to comment then. And no doubt paid much more attention to the proceedings than I did in that long and very grueling Senate deliberations.
So I don't personally have any additional, you know, comments to make relative to that. I think the points that I've thought about have been made by my colleagues. I think we, it's a difficult timeframe in either circumstance in some respects relative to student participation. The advantage, I think, in either circumstance is that the dates have been known by virtue of being a part of the Charter since it became finalized and put before the public. So it would be, while it does create a complication for students, regardless of which way it ends up being, it is one that has been known since the Charter was put before the voters. So I think that also is a mitigating factor in some respects. But is there any other further comment, members? Is anyone ready to make a motion or...
I guess there's one other point that I just raised, and that is that the reason, one of the reasons put forward to have the election coincide with Election Day was because that is the day in which the largest number of people go to the polls and people, people of all ages, including students. And so that in order to gain the largest participation in the actual election where the final decisions are being made, the deliberate decision was made to place this first election, if the Legislature and Town Meeting would agree, on the date when the greatest number of people will go to the polls anyway. I think that it's been our experience that, but for this last town election, which was somewhat exceptional, town elections don't normally have a huge draw of voters and particularly student voters. So that it would seem that placing the election on a later date in January will actually result in less student voting than placing the election in the November election, when a lot of students would be going to the polls because of the Senate gubernatorial elections, which will pique much interest. And it sort of thing pushes me to advise Town Meeting to balance out the primary, which we don't know whether all the districts will have primary votes at all, or any of which ones will versus the actual election where final decisions will be made. It's just a difficult choice, but I think that it would disenfranchise a greater number of people by placing the election to coincide with the national election this time. Ms. Brewer?
Following up on that, I think, thank you, Mr. Steinberg, for elaborating on that some more, because I did want to follow up on one of the things you had said earlier. Of course, the entire election process is very important and needs to be accessible to everyone. It is also simply a fact that the last few weeks are the most important. And those last few weeks taking place in January would totally disenfranchise the student population, whereas those last few weeks taking place in November, much more palatable. I admit that the primary date is not great. I wish it had been moved into the middle of the month, as Galvin had intended to do at one point, and then moved it back to the 4th. Very unfortunate that it's around the time that it's so close to Labor Day and when classes start. I think one of the other things that's not being recognized here is it's my understanding that we're just talking about the first year. This is a permanent issue. So if people are saying it's bad to do it this year, it's at least almost as bad, if not as bad, to do it every year. And that is what we will do, no matter which provision takes place this year. From then on, it will be a November election, and this will continue to be an issue, which will continue to be a question that some people feel disenfranchised and consider litigation of Twitter. But this first year, no matter which way it goes, in subsequent years, it's still going to be a November election for the very clear reasons that you stated, Mr. Steinberg, and were explained at length during the Charter Commission process. That doesn't mean everyone agreed with them. I understand that. But the point remains that we are only arguing at this point about the first election. Forever after, it will be November.
And then to respond to that, to Ms. Brewer's comments, with a couple of additional points. The November election in odd-numbered years is when traditionally in Massachusetts, most cities have their elections. And North Hampton, Springfield, all of the major communities around that are city forms of government are in November of those odd-numbered years. So that was why the decision was made to come into that cycle, as I understand it from having been at some Commission discussions on the subject of election dates. The other thing, this year's circumstance with the very early primary election was unique and had to do with the timing of the Jewish holidays. And that was why the intention to have it at its more traditional date later in September was disrupted, and the separate decision was made after a lot of discussion at the state level.
So if there's not further comment, I would entertain a motion.
Motion, please. I move to recommend to the April 30th, 2018 special town meeting, Article One, an Act to Hold a Special Election.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And so that's a four to zero with one absent. And so we move on to Article Two, rescission of general bylaw, Town Meeting Advisory Committee. I believe Mr. Riddle wanted to speak to us about that a little bit, so if you would be so kind as to share your thoughts with us and get us updated on where TMCC, SPP is and TMCC is. So go right ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Slaughter. I'm Chris Riddle, speaking for the Town Meeting Coordinating Committee and its Subcommittee on Policies and Procedures. I'm speaking to Article Two, the move to rescind the Town Meeting vote on the Town Meeting Advisory Committee from the previous Town Meeting. This vote created a nine-member Town Meeting Coordinating Committee, and it's up to the TMCC and the manager to put that together in the upcoming Town Meeting. Our understanding from a meeting on April 13th attended by the Select Board Liaison was that the Select Board would withdraw the article if the TMCC and SPP wished it. And these two committees have both voted unanimously to ask the Select Board to dismiss Article Two. Why? The TMCC and the SPP unanimously, I'm sorry, we all, in all probability, will have at least one more Town Meeting, maybe more if the delay, if the vote is delayed, on the council is delayed to January. It will benefit, that Town Meeting will benefit from a report from the TMAC. Several people have expressed interest in serving so far. Many people worked very hard on this proposal, were proud of it. In principle, it's an excellent idea that there be a group assigned to vet complex and detailed issues for legislative bodies. And there may turn out to be a need for a group such as this to do the same job for the City Council. We ask the Select Board to move to dismiss Article Two.
Is there other public comment relative to Article Two on the special town meeting?
Maureen Adams, and I'm a member of SPP and was part of that unanimous vote to ask you to dismiss the article that you wrote. And I just want to say briefly, and I think that the memo from the attorney, I guess we have to practice saying attorney so as not to confuse people, supports this idea that we maintain an intact government as we are until we have a new intact government. This particular, the TMAC, was voted by Town Meeting as a bylaw. It has the same bylaw status as other instruments of Town Meetings, such as the Finance Committee and the TMCC, the Town Meeting Coordinating Committee. So that there is an element of cherry picking in pulling this one out and leaving the others intact. And indeed, my view is that they should all be intact because the Charter has its own provisions for the dissolution of the current government when the new government is formed. We know that that's a difficult process. We don't have crystal balls to know how it will happen or when it will happen. And therefore, I think it is inadvisable and unwise to pick out a particular bylaw and say, "We're going to dismiss this," whereas the others dissolve when the current government is dissolved. So I ask that you dismiss this so as not to unfairly select one bylaw for eradication while the other bylaws correctly stay in place. Thank you.
Just very quickly, Janet Calhoun, recede one. Just want to speak in support of dismissing. I think it's truly important to have such a body to study complex legislation, and I hope that it will be dismissed. Thanks.
Any other further comment on the product relative to Article Two on the special town meeting warrant? Not, then we'll turn to my colleagues. Yes, Mr. Steinberg?
Yeah, I think I should say something right off the bat to clarify. Once Town Meeting has, once the Select Board has signed a warrant for Town Meeting, then the warrant belongs, is no longer within our control. And it is really up to Town Meeting to act upon a warrant as far as dismissal or action or referral, which are the options that are available to it. But I don't believe that Select Board has the legal authority, and my colleagues who are sitting to my left here, right, who've been on the body for much longer, unless you recall of any event, but I don't think that there's a provision to do that.
Your viewers to come in.
Well, clearly I'm on the spot because I'm characterized as having stated something that I don't believe I said. I believe I said that the Select Board would very much take into account what TMCC, SPP, which did not meet between the time of the election until April 10, well after we would have to sign the warrant. So we couldn't get their opinion on it because they hadn't scheduled a meeting. So I did say that if they wanted it to not be acted on, that we would certainly take that under advisement, and we could, as has been stated by a member of the audience, recommend dismissal of this article. We can't withdraw it. It could not be withdrawn. It was too late to withdraw it when the meeting was taking place that's being referenced, you know, days before we signed the warrant, well before SPP was able to have that. One of the reasons that we put this on here was to give ourselves the option, because like everything else, you put things on, you can take them off, but you can't ever add something later unless you call a whole another special town meeting, which is a huge amount of paperwork for relatively little gain. The reason to do this would be because we are not expecting to need a substantial number of special town meetings after annual town meeting, and this body, once elected, does not begin to act until after annual town meeting is dissolved. Therefore, its only task would be if, not when, but if, a special town meeting is called sometime between the end of annual town meeting and the beginning of the new government. Practically speaking, the task that TMAC would take on could be done by the existing TMCC, which no one has suggested we would not elect members to, as we normally do during annual town meeting, again, whose actions, whose terms begin at the end of annual town meeting. It was also discussed at that meeting by some of the members that the work could in fact still be done, the research of the TMAC that had been so eloquently spoken about by so many people at annual town meeting could in fact be done by TMCC members. I also want to point out that this was not an overwhelming vote in Town Meeting. It was a 99 to 81 vote. There was not overwhelming support in Town Meeting to make this TMAC happen. That does not mean that we shouldn't do it because all you need is a majority, but it is not something that the entire community got behind. Practically speaking, I don't think it makes any difference at this point if we have the elections or not. Hopefully, people have been considering running, and that process is being managed not through the Town Manager so much, but by the moderator, as is indicated in the bylaw, just as TMCC and they work with the Town Clerk to make sure that we all have that election and we all remember to actually go and vote in the back of the room. And it's my understanding that both ballots would be done that same night, so as not to confuse people any further than we all do. So I believe that it's been published more than one place that may eat as a deadline for people to express interest to the moderator, and of course, there are a variety of different ways of expressing interest since this body is open to the entire community, not to Town Meeting members, which makes it more awkward to advertise as well because it's easier when you can just tell Town Meeting members over and over about TMCC. It's harder to try and tell the whole community about TMAC. I don't think it's in any way a problem to move forward with it, aside from the concerns I had when we did it at annual town meeting. Select Board didn't recommend it then, and one of the concerns that I had was the amount of staff time that was the expectation versus what was written in the bylaw. I see that there's not likely to be a lot of special town meeting articles, therefore not a lot of staff time. So while staff is stretched especially thin due to some retirements, changes in government, et cetera, it doesn't seem problematic to me. So I'm open to what my colleagues think might be the best way to manage this.
So if memory serves, when we took this up, and part of the reason we put it on the special town meeting warrant, and please correct me if I'm misremembering, you know, the idea had surfaced, I don't think it was by us, I believe it was brought to us perhaps by TMCC as a potential thing they might want to do, but because they weren't going to have an opportunity to actually discuss it fully as a whole group, but I may be misremembering that. But nonetheless, you know, we put it on, it was not, you know, it was to make it available for action if it was deemed to be the right decision based on what the subsequent meeting... So we had a, let me back up and say this more clearly. My remembering is that we placed this on this warrant to provide the opportunity for the dissolution of that, or the rescission of that general bylaw, partly because there was a need to have a debate in TMCC's Subcommittee of SPP about whether or not they wanted to or not, or whether they recommended to Town Meeting to or not to form the TMAC or not. So in order to, if they had decided to not, that they didn't want to go ahead with TMAC, recommend not going ahead with TMAC, this gave us an option to do that. And so since they have met and they did decide that they would like to continue with the idea of the TMAC, personally, I don't have a problem with that. I don't know that we need to, you know, we can recommend dismissal to that effect because I think the, my understanding is the purpose of putting this article on to that special town meeting warrant was to have it available to us and then allow the TMCC and the TMCC SPP to meet and have a more full discussion about whether to take action on that article or to try to get it dismissed or defeated. So I'm not opposed to us taking a position to, you know, recommend dis- So I'm not opposed to us taking a position to, you know, recommend dismissal. But I am open to my colleagues' opinions about that as well. Ms. Roll.
Yeah, just to try to emphasize but not repeat the points my colleagues have made. My understanding, there's no animosity whatsoever. We're certainly not targeting any particular warrant article. I think the only thought was that given, as we've said, the change in town government and the limited amount of activity for town meeting between then and when the council takes up its office, it might have rendered moot the purpose of this body. But if those who worked so hard on it want to keep it going and are willing to put in the time, I have no objection.
Mr. Steinberg.
Yes, I have two thoughts. See if anybody from my colleagues can respond to the second one. But first is that the largest action in fall town meeting and the reason that we normally have a fall town meeting or would in this year is financial articles because we need to make budget transfers each year in the fall in order to be able to have the budget ready to submit, to get a tax rate approval from the Department of Revenue. And since the purpose of TMAC was non-financial articles, since Finance, as they pointed out, Finance Committee is in place to make recommendations in this body appointed by the moderator, that it was really intended for non-financial articles. So I don't think that there's going to be a lot of non-financial articles that would be likely on a special town meeting warrant if there is a special town meeting. So the other thing that I'd like to know about is given the fact that the town clerk and the assistant to the town manager are both retiring in coming months and those positions are in transition and the amount of work that needs to be done just to manage this transition process and the election process for the council, how much work is required of our staff to support the election of TMAC? Is that something we ought to consider? And I don't really have sufficient information
Zero.
to respond to that.
So.
No, sorry.
So we had this very discussion before we knew about the retirements at annual town meeting. And we said we were concerned about the level of staff support that would be required. And I mentioned that briefly as well, associated with retirements and the changes. What we heard at some pre-meetings associated with the amount of staff supported versus what we heard at town meeting were somewhat different characterizations. It remains in the town manager's area. It's not, the town moderator deals with all the getting them elected by working with the town clerk part. But then after that, it's up to the town manager to decide how to deploy staff. And so if the town manager, and it's up to the Select Board to supervise that, and we all know how that actually works in terms of, of course, he does the day-to-day work that needs to be done. And so there potentially could be some question at some point as to whether or not, given the push-pull of the issues that you've raised, Mr. Steinberg, that it would be difficult to assign staff to work on particular issues. But again, we're expecting them to be so few issues that it's not the same as a situation where they're looking at a full annual town meeting warrant, where they might have lots of different people they need to talk to about lots of different things. So that's what caused me to feel like despite our feelings about this in the spring and our concerns about the use of staff, that we would be able, in this case, it seems like it would be reasonable to expect that it won't be a huge burden. And if it is, the town manager will tell us. And there's nothing compelling the town manager to give five hours or one hour to any particular issue. It's just that obviously, town manager doesn't want to make anyone in the community unhappy.
Is there, have we come to a place to make a motion relative to this article? Would someone like to offer one? Yes?
So one of the things we always struggle with when we're figuring out the more complex articles and in terms of our actions is are we recommending someone else's motion to dismiss? Or are we ourselves making a motion to dismiss? Since we had to put this on as our article, just to quick get it on there so that we'd have the option, I think it puts us in the position of our first discussion should be around whether or not we ourselves are going to either support the article or rather than voting against the article, we would in fact move dismissal rather than moving in terms of the article.
Right.
So that, I think, is our question here, is are we moving in terms of the article and then moving to support it or defeat it? Which sounds like a terrible idea. Or are we going to make the motion that is, "I move to dismiss," rather than waiting for someone else to do so and then we say, "Yes, we agree with them."
Okay. So I'm of the opinion, you know, given how I perceive, we went, how we got to hear from our original conversation, which was about placing this article for consideration to allow the TMCC and the TMCC SPP to have a richer conversation about it. And so if they're coming back to us with that, that they're recommending that it be dismissed, I'm personally fine with us moving dismissal. Because I think it was, you know, we put it in as, I don't want to say a placeholder, but in a sense, it was holding the place so that we could have action on it if we needed to. They'd come back to us and said, "We don't think, we want to take action on it in that way." And so I'm of the opinion that we can honor that and recommend dismissal by virtue of an actual motion to dismiss. So if someone, I could make that motion, but we generally defer to my colleagues on that if they wanted to raise it that way.
So it's not any of the options on our sheet because we don't normally do it directly. But I move to dismiss. Yeah, it doesn't flow anymore.
What you're really having to move is that you're suggesting, what you're asking is that when this comes up at town meeting, that we make a motion to dismiss. The action of dismissal is an action that has to be taken by town meeting. We are not allowed to take that action. But we can make a motion to dismiss. Town meeting has to act on it.
So I move, I move that the Select Board move to dismiss Article Two, rescission of general bylaw, Town Meeting Advisory Committee.
Second. Okay. So we're clear on what we're doing? Have you got that, Mr. Steinberg?
Not recommending dismissal. We are moving to dismiss.
All right. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh, no.
Okay. So we've got three in favor, one absent, and one no. All right. So that's taken the two, the positions on the two articles that are on our special town meeting just moments before the annual town meeting. So now we're moving on to our action discussion item four B, taking positions on annual town meeting warrant articles. The first ones we're taking up are under Article Eight and Article Ten, which are related to the school budgets. And as I said earlier, I'm going to recuse myself from this conversation. And so I will ask if it's without objection by my colleagues, if Mr. Steinberg will chair the meeting as we go through those articles and hopefully we'll take the actions on those two while we're, and I can come back in to mix it after that.
Thank you. Ringgano, welcome.
Hello, good evening.
So we have three motions that are, three actions of town meeting that we need to consider. Since we've had substantial discussion on one, maybe I'll save that for last and see if we can present the elementary budget first. Then we can do the regional budget and that'll flow into the regional assessment method motion. It's the third.
That makes sense. Elementary school is the most straightforward, quickest, I think. So Sean Ringgano, Director of Finance for the schools. I'm going to start on page two of the elementary packet that was sent out. So the proposed elementary school budget for FY19 that was approved by School Committee is twenty-three million, two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, three-sixty-five, which is a three-point-one percent increase. And it is within the guidance that was issued by Finance Committee. It's below the three-point-five because of the whole charter choice, whether it's in the school budget or not in the school budget. But we did go up to the full three-point-five percent increase when you factor in charter choice. This budget proposal includes five-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, two-fifty-four of net reductions, which are going to be listed in a couple pages. If you go to page three, the reason why we had
Mr. Steinberg, I'm sorry. You're sensing confusion.
Yes.
Page two doesn't give a three-point-five percent and it gives a different total figure.
Three-point-one, right?
Right. Three-point-three. I'm confused.
Sorry, so FY19.
FY19 proposal is three-point-one.
Okay.
It's the greatest fifteen years.
Right. So it's the two-three, two-two-seven, three-sixty-five.
Right, yep. And again, that three-point-one is three-point-five when you factor in the charter of choice, which are paid by the town director.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Just distracted by the gray.
It's highlighted in my packets. Page three just illustrates why we have such a significant gap this year in making those net reductions. All heard about the health insurance issue that has affected pretty much all town departments. The chart shows on page three the level service increases over FY18 that we're projecting for FY19. And by far, health insurance is the largest. We haven't seen anything like that in a very long time. But the increase over FY18 is just north of eight-hundred thousand dollars for health insurance alone. The other three categories are pretty typical from year to year, but the health insurance one is unique this year. On page four, that lists the approved budget additions and reductions for FY19. I won't spend a lot of time on all of them, but I'll point out a few. We continue to make some enrollment-based reductions. So you'll see under the Budget Adjustments section, there's a one-point-oh reduction. It's a classroom reduction. Again, it's based on enrollment. When we project how many kindergarten classrooms we have coming in and how many sixth-grade classrooms we have moving on to the region, we can reduce one classroom based on enrollment. It was a difficult year. We tried to keep the reductions as far away from the classroom as possible. I'll say probably the hardest reduction here is the reduction of four intervention paraeducators. We're redeveloping a model to deliver intervention, but we weren't able to completely keep this away from the classroom. There were some instructional reductions just due to the magnitude of the health insurance increase. The net reductions overall is five-point-eight-five FTE from where we are today. And then the next two pages just give you a little bit of a picture of our grants and our revolving funds. I won't spend a lot of time on them. We continue to see some reductions in grants, specifically early education grants. The inclusive preschool grant is being phased out. So we're in the second to last year of the phase out where the grant will go completely away. It's dropping by ten to twenty thousand dollar increments each year. So you'll see that continued decline at the top where you see it go from fifty-seven thousand down to thirty-eight thousand from FY18 to FY19. And on the revolving fund side, the only thing I'll mention is that the school choice program continues to attract a lot of interest in school choice. This year, we had over ninety school choice in students, which is the highest we've had so far. And it is generating a significant amount of revenue. You can see it on the revolving fund summary at the bottom where it shows revenue for school choice. We're projecting about six-hundred-and-five thousand dollars of school choice in revenue for next year. And those are the highlights. I'm happy to answer any questions on the elementary budget that the board may have.
Look to my colleagues, look to my left and right to see if any, mostly to my left as it is. First, see if there are any questions or comments. Yes, Mr. Steinberg.
Thank you, Mr. Ringgano. Always very clear. Oh, my mistake on the shading. One of the things that, the purpose of you coming before us this way is in many ways for the public to hear this because largely, we defer to the School Committee. We are not going to second-guess what the School Committee worked out with you and Mr. Morris. But what we are going to, what I am going to ask you about is what's town meeting going to try and add money in for? So you mentioned specifically, and we've talked about putting library paras in the past. We had taken them from full-time down to part-time and then they went up again. In terms of the instruction with the intervention paraeducators, that's obviously something that you've drawn attention to because it's very painful. At this point, is there, I know you can't predict the future any more than we can, but is there any movement that you're aware of to try and add things on the floor of town meeting in addition to this budget?
Not that I know of. We had the budget hearing the year when the library para issue popped up. There was a lot of public input at the budget hearing. This year, I think it's a much different year because of the very large health insurance increase that really impacted a lot of things. So I haven't heard any of that and we are trying to redesign the model. We do feel confident that none of those positions are actually going to lose their jobs. We have enough para turnover from year to year that these people will be placed. So it's not going to be a loss of employment for those four positions, but it will be a model shift in terms of how interventions deliver. So I'm not sensing anything right now, but it could always change.
Thank you.
I could ask lots of questions about how that shift in delivery model takes place, but I think that I'm going to have to just trust that the School Committee has dealt into those issues. The question I'd ask is whether you're aware that the principals and the superintendent are comfortable with the model that will be going forward for delivering special education services?
Yeah, I believe so. They develop all these as a team. So all of these have been vetted by the principals and then obviously the superintendent. I think what I'm hearing is that it probably would be helpful for town meeting to have some sort of packet of information on what that change might look like, either sent out ahead of time or available on the floor of town meeting. So I'll make that note and communicate that to the superintendent.
Anything else? No other questions? Because if not, we could turn to the motion sheet very quickly. And there is a motion that is on the motion sheet about Article Eight Elementary School Operating Budget. If somebody wanted to make that motion, we could hear that motion at this point.
I move to recommend to the April thirtieth, twenty-eighteen Annual Town Meeting, Article Eight, FY19 Elementary School Operating Budget in the amount of twenty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-seven, three-hundred-and-sixty-five.
Second. So we have motions made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Then all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
No?
Absent.
You're absent. We have two members absent.
Two absent.
Would just point out, I think you also meant million, twenty-three million.
Did I? I did say thousand, didn't I? Thank you for that. Yeah.
It's written.
Probably wouldn't quite work.
It's written, Rose, I mentioned it quite a bit.
Well, you know, we just read what they put in front of us, right? Yeah, it's all good. All right, it's known.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Steinberg.
So thanks for noting that. And the motion will reflect the amount of, is the correct amount. And we'll proceed, I guess, with the second item of the three, which is the regional school budget.
The assessment methods are at the end of this, so I'll pause before I get there and just sort of focus on the regional budget itself. So just like the elementary schools, I'll start with the sort of highlights. So the School Committee approved a budget of thirty-one million, eight-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, three-fifty-one, which is an increase of one-point-six percent over the FY18 budget. This is the total budget, so the guidance we receive from Amherst Finance Committee is just of the Amherst assessment. So the budget always goes up a different amount than now. Under this proposal, the total percentage increase to the town assessments is two-point-three-two percent. So that's the overall assessment increase for all four towns. However, the increase to just the Amherst assessment is three-point-five percent, which is the guidance we receive from Finance Committee. This proposal includes reductions of one million, one-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, seven-fifty, again driven largely by the health insurance. I'll point out the exact increase in a second. That's the largest net reduction we've had to make in a very long time, if not the largest. But it's driven by the health insurance premium increases. If you go to page seven, these show the, this chart shows the revenues that are supporting the overall budget. Everything in here was developed before the House Ways and Means Budget Everything in here was developed before the House Ways and Means budget came out, but it still appears to be pretty much on track. Chapter 70 came out a little bit better in the House Ways and Means budget than what was approved, this was based on the governor's, and Transportation came out a little bit worse because the House Ways and Means budget eliminated vocational transportation reimbursement, which we used to get quite a bit of, but overall, the spending plan is still on track. The next page, which is page eight, shows our use of reserves, which is an important indicator of how we're doing. The amount of reserves we projected for next year, based on how much we project going back into our reserves at the end of this year, will put us at 4% in regional schools, can't go above 5%, and we try to stay between 3 and 5%. So our 4% projection for really the end of this year is right in line with where we want to be. If you go to page nine, that is the expense summary for the budget. So, I'll point out a couple key things, so the health insurance, if you go down towards its expense accounts, breaks out health insurance for employees and retirees. So, the combination of those two increases, which are in the shaded FY '19 and FY '18 change column, is just north of, just about $900,000, and that's over the FY '18 current budget. So again, a very large increase that we haven't had before, at least since my time. And on the bright side, in other programs, that's where we pay for our tuitions for Charter of Choice and vocational tuition, all three of those have come down this year quite a bit, so we have a significant amount of savings projected based on reduced enrollment for kids choosing those programs. And we hope to see that trend continue, but that was certainly a really positive development in a year where we saw this really large health insurance increase that helped offset some of that increase. The next page shows the proposed additions and reductions, again, I'll just point out maybe one or two. We have a number of budget adjustments, which are really efficiencies, trying to scrape the bottom of the barrel to find savings wherever we could, given the really difficult budget year. We were able to negotiate a lower tuition rate for one of our vocational school districts, which saved about $25,000. We made a number of other changes to secure lower pricing for some of our contracts. We did make a few additions, one of the notable additions is that we added a .2 FTE Chinese professional staff position to round out our Chinese program, we have a pretty robust Chinese program, but we were a section short of having a complete program, so that will round that piece out. And then there were just a number of reductions, again, we tried to keep them away from the classrooms we could, but given the magnitude of reductions, we couldn't do that across the board, and our total reductions proposed for next year is 8.98 FTE. The next two pages are on grants and revolving funds, similar to the Amherst side. Is it worth talking about capital, Mr. Seibert?
Why don't we hold off, just for a moment, because we'll, I think we tied this to Article 10, the assessment methodology, and let's come back to capital in a minute. Are there any operating budget questions, I think this is a pause to see if there are Are there any programs or classes that will have to be cut in their entirety as a result of cuts?
Yeah, so there's two programmatic shifts, well, there's three that I think are worth noting. So Summit Academy is being relocated from Summit Academy building, as you know now, to a vacant wing of the high school, so that will have some savings, but it's a pretty large shift in terms of it's changing buildings. The culinary program is going away based on these reductions, it's part of that wing where the Summit Academy program would go. And also, the preschool program is going away, which is a self-sustaining program, it's been around for a little while, but it's not, it's not a credit-bearing program or a certificate-bearing program where students can get an early childhood certificate based on their work with that program, so neither one of those were true vocation programs where you could get certificates from them, they were more of an elective type program. But those are the three, I would say, major shifts, there's certainly other ones, given the amount of reductions, but those are the three that I've been talking about probably the most, the school committee.
Culinary program is, not students who are really interested in culinary, other than that as a career, because they would be more likely, I gather, to go to the vocational schools?
Yeah, I think you could say that, I think, again, it's more of an elective, I think it's a fun elective that kids take, but it's, if you were looking to pursue that into the college level, I think Smith Vocational and maybe Franklin, I'm not sure about Franklin, have sort of more, they have the credit-bearing or the certificate-bearing programs that a lot would probably take for that.
The Summit Academy, the educational program that's offered to students at the academy, I assume that the, or hope, let's say not assume, but hope that the shift does not affect the educational opportunity that's needed for those students.
Right. Yeah, no, there's been a lot of work with the Summit Academy principal, state, our new facility director, to try to make that new space as accommodating as possible for that new program. It's going to be completely separated from the high school, it really has to be, to maintain its sort of separate school status, but they've been doing a lot of work, and the plan is to have most of that work done over the summer, so the kids are ready to go in for the start of next school year. But they're trying to make similar spaces to what they have at Summit Academy in terms of common rooms and things of that nature.
Just no questions? Who's for?
So as not to appear disinterested, as I indicated, we defer to the school committee, and we've also been to several four towns meetings where we've heard about the nature of these reductions. And just to be really clear to the listening public, if you haven't been watching school committee meetings, go back and watch them, because this is painful, these are not good cuts, these are over a million dollars, this is the best that we can do under the circumstances, because we have to do real things, but there are people who are heartbroken about the preschool program, there are people who are heartbroken about the culinary arts program, because although it was not the program for you, if you wanted to actually go and run a restaurant, you would definitely go to Smith for that, it was a place that, just as we often refer to sports as the thing that gets the kid in the door at the beginning of the day, culinary arts program was that, and so was the preschool program. There are students who don't want to be there at the high school, but when they could go to those programs, it made their day. And so, I appreciate all the different things you guys are trying to weigh and to try and make up for, you know, that loss and find other ways to program those interests, because a kid who's doing one of those two things is probably not suddenly going to say, oh, that's fine, I'll take drumming instead. And it's finding ways to engage the students, that that was a really important point of their engagement, is critically important, and so thank you for that, and thank you for all the work that's gone into this. One of the challenges always, of course, is you can't make it sound too bad, because then people don't want to come to the schools, but it is awkward, and it is difficult, and it's not the program that the school committee, the administration, the teachers, or the taxpayers would prefer. We'd rather have more, at least what we had, rather than the things we're taking away. It's nice to hear small adjustments, like the Chinese, you know, finding a way to maybe beef that up a little, since we used to have a lot more language than we do now. The one thing that has also gone back and forth in so many different ways is the GCC program. Could you speak to that briefly? Because I, we keep trying with that and in different ways.
So this, the GCC program that's being eliminated here, that was the day program, so that was, this year was actually the first full year of that program. We added it a couple of years ago, we had a stronger budget year. So, it's, from all accounts, it's been pretty successful, it's not, it doesn't serve a ton of kids, because it's just one class, I think it's one class, might be two, in the fall of the semester, so it doesn't serve a ton of students, but it did serve some students, and we, the school committee did have a presentation from the person who runs the GCC in, during the day program, so the school committee was fully aware of sort of the pros and cons of it. So that is the program that's being proposed to go away. There's still the evening program, which is always sort of, every year, sort of, are we going to do or not do it? Based on how much demand there is out there. Started really strong in terms of demand, I'd say it's probably waned a little bit, but that's really managed by GCC, we just sort of make the space available, and sort of act like landlords a little bit, with vacant space available. And then there are other opportunities with Amherst College, and a couple, there may be another one that I'm forgetting, where kids can also take some college courses during the day, depending on their schedule. So, that presentation was given to the school committee, I can't remember all the specifics, but there are still opportunities for students, but this program was probably the most convenient because it was actually located at the school.
Yes, I'm keeping my eye out on the audience, it's easier for me to see in this direction and this direction, so if people raise their hands and they want to speak on a topic that we're talking about, I've actually had the opportunity to see better than my colleagues, so I'm not trying to ignore you. The, before we proceed on to consideration of the budget, why don't we talk briefly about also the assessment method, even though we're pretty familiar with it, so I don't have to go into great detail.
Sure. So, there are a lot of factors that would make this a difficult budget year, health insurance being the largest, but also the assessment method. The towns are in different places right now in terms of enrollment and property values and what way they're moving, and it makes the assessment method really complicated in terms of finding a method that seems fair to everybody. So the method that, after a lot of meetings and discussion over the summer, the method that seemed to have an agreement from town officials at the four town meeting was this five-year transition plan model, but really just the first year of that transition plan was what we've heard, and years beyond that first year still need a lot more discussion to see if everyone's, wants to move in that direction or move in a different direction. But the five-year transition plan was essentially to move from where we are now to the statutory method, by phasing the statutory method 20% each year, so the first year would phase in 20% of the statutory method, and the other 80% would be based on the regional agreement, which is largely allocated by a value rolling average of enrollment. And so that's the method that there was consensus on at four town meeting, and the school committee voted to recommend. And because that is an alternative method, because it's not statutory method, it's transitioned to it, but it's not the actual statutory method, it does require approval at each town meeting, and it will be considered an amendment to the regional agreement, because it's not the method in our regional agreement, so it'll be considered an amendment and require approval at each town meeting. And all the town meetings are on different days this year, which is great, if you're going to town meetings?
So, for people that were watching this meeting in person or at home and are not familiar with the interplay between the two, they really are separate votes, but they're very much interrelated, because in the end, it has to do with the amount that we are going to be assessed as a town, and the amount that each of the other three towns is going to be assessed, and so that while they are separate votes, they have a cumulative effect of determining a very significant part of the budget going forward for the 2019 operating budget. So without going into gruesome detail that would go beyond that, I'm just going to leave it at that for the moment, and see if any of my colleagues would like to go back to the motion sheet at this point and offer a motion under Article VIII for the, a recommendation to Town Meeting regarding that portion of the operating budget that is the regional school budget.
Maybe somebody can read millions. She should read that.
Yeah, so here, I move to recommend to the April 10th, 2018 Annual Town Meeting Article VIII FY '19 Operating Budget Amherst Regional, Amherst Pelham Regional Schools in the amount of $31 million, it's counted, $835,351, and, do we get a vote for proportional share here, or? In part, the same motion, okay?
I think there's, there's two motions listed, right?
Yeah.
Oh, no, that's right.
No, no, it is one.
This part is on part one, so, okay. And, and go ahead, okay, and the appropriation of $16,45,304 for Amherst proportional share. Remember to be determined to speak to the article on behalf of the select board. For the assessment, the separate motion down here, okay?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, moving seconded, any further discussion, hearing none, in the request to speak, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That's aye, also says three in favor, you're not, you're, we have two absent.
Two absent.
So, it's three in favor and two absent.
So it's two vertical eights.
For, for the second Article VIII motion for the evening, the one we just voted on. Then, turning to Article 10, and I want to go just to the warrant for a second, because it's actually fairly short. The warrant article itself reads, "To see if the town will vote to amend Article VI of the Amherst Pelham Regional School District Agreement."
Section six, or?
Section six, of the Amherst Pelham Regional School District Agreement by adding subsection I as follows, "For fiscal year 2019 only, the alternative operating budget assessment shall be calculated at 20% of the minimum contribution, with the remainder of the assessment allocated to the member towns in accordance with per pupil method found in Article VI E of the Amherst Pelham Regional School District Agreement." The reason I wanted to read that is that the article itself, and therefore what we presume will be the motion made by the Finance Committee, will not talk about a transition portion, it is a specific amount of money calculated according to a formulation, and so that this is not asking Town Meeting to take a vote for a transition to something, it's asking the Town Meeting to take a vote for a specific assessment methodology for the year that has no reference to transition to anything. So with that, I would ask if there's a motion or any further discussion first before the motion.
I ask.
Yes.
Come on, hang him if you don't mind, and that is, and thank you for making that super clear, and if Mr. Zomak, our illustrious notes taker, would please include the actual language of Article 10 in our minutes, rather than just saying what Article 10 says, that would be helpful, I think constant reminders that this is a one-year. And then, I would like to follow up, based on our many discussions, including at four boards, four towns meetings, not four boards, but four towns meetings, as you indicated, all the town meetings are on separate days, so you don't have to be in two places at once, as usual, so that's a, that's a lucky year. But in terms of moving forward, as this has been quite challenging to get to this point, we do believe at this time that all boards are recommending this to all of their towns.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything to the counter of that, so I believe that is the case.
Well, just a minor point, thank you for that explanation about what the article says and doesn't, but I'm assuming Mr. Mangan or someone will nonetheless give a full explanation to Town Meeting, because reminders are helpful, speaking of reminders, great.
So now I move to recommend to the April 30th, 2018 Annual Town Meeting Article 10, Amherst Regional Public School District Assessment. Method, I want the word method in there.
Yeah, let me say method, that's your, usually.
Yes.
Well, actually, well, actually, yeah, it's, the article says method, although it talks in terms of numbers rather than abstract.
That's a good point, the article title isn't actually meaningless, it's just supposed to help people figure out where we are, is it more accurate to just say assessment, given the words we just went over?
Of course, we're voting on the warrant, the warrant says method, so.
It would be one year.
But the warrant says method, so, I don't know.
I like method better, not that it matters, just because the assessment, your specific assessment versus.
Yeah.
So we'll just make sure our minutes say assessment method and then actually give the full text of the article, as Mr. Steinberg read it out. So if anybody questions later what we voted on, they'll know exactly the words we voted on.
Second.
It's been motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing no requests for further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we have two members absent, so this is three to zero with two members absent, and I think that concludes it nicely. Mr. Mangan, thank you very much, appreciate your time this evening, and Slaughter, back to you.
All right, thank you. So I'll resume my, I'm seeing, yes, sir.
I'd just ask one question of the board, is it your practice as you're going through these to assign who will take them at town meeting? I just didn't know whether you wanted to get through all of them and go, then go back through all of them.
Well, I think since Kruger's not here, she's taking all of these. We sometimes decide on the spot and we sometimes decide later, so we haven't decided, no one's volunteered as yet to, to speak to them.
We haven't volunteered each other.
Yeah, exactly. So next on our agenda is Article Twelve A, which is CPA appropriations, and Mr. Buddington's here, so introduce yourself to the camera and, just to us, but for the camera's purposes, and then tell us about the CPA article, if you would please.
Thank you, I'm Nate Buddington, Chair of CPA this year, and we have a number of interesting proposals. I do want to say before I get into the proposals that we had four new members of CPA this year, a novice chairman, one of our members passed away halfway through our cycle. Throughout all of that, we were able to act with a pretty high level of efficiency largely because of the pretty extraordinary support we received from Sonia Aldrich and Holly Bowser from Town Hall. If there are any indication of the type of work that takes place in Town Hall, we're in good shape, so I just want to thank them for that.
Appreciate that.
So we have a land purchase, which will be voted on separately. I can do that, I can separate that out. The others will be in a slate for approval. We also have a debt service, I don't know, is that, you have to pardon my novice chairmanship, is that voted on separately?
Yes.
It is, if you can explain it now if you want.
Okay.
We can discuss them all and we'll sort out the participants.
Okay, so let's start with the debt service.
Okay.
Three hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars. This is for the town masonry, Hawthorne property, Amherst Housing Authority payments for rehab of a number of units, the Rock Farm, Amherst Housing Authority payment for some existing affordable housing, Rolling Green and Kiras Land acquisition. The, the land purchase is the Epstein property, this is a piece of property, it's about thirty acres, it's sort of in the southeast corner of the double rotary near Atkins. This is a pretty remarkable piece of property that has one of the biggest ponds in Amherst. It will allow us unfettered access up to Mont Holly Oak Range. There is a pretty significant state land grant that comes with this, so CPA has allocated a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. The land grant, I believe, is a hundred and ninety-five thousand for this, for this purchase. It's got some meadow habitat, it has undeveloped wetlands and this, and the pond. So that will be voted on separately. The slate of projects, so let me stick with open space while we're on that category. We've allocated ninety thousand dollars for the Amherst Dog Park Task Force to construct a dog park. This will be in a corner of the landfill off of Olkutshire Town Road. It'll be about an acre, I believe. It'll be fenced. We, there are a number of expenses with this beyond the construction of the dog park. We have to do a DEP reuse study, there's surveys, that's largely what the ninety, ninety thousand dollars is. This, there's a very, very strong likelihood this will be matched with a Stanton Foundation grant, which is a foundation that exists to create dog parks, and they'll pay about ninety percent of the total construction costs. We also have a sort of unglamorous twenty-five thousand dollar conservation due diligence fund that we're, we're funding. This is something that is created to pay for land surveys and any kind of preservation project, for appraisals, any kind of study that we need to do for any of these projects, and that fund is dwindling down, so we're replenishing it with a twenty-five thousand dollar grant. We have a couple of recreation proposals. Amherst Baseball has asked for forty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. This is to complete a project that CPAC funded in 2015 to restore the two little league baseball fields at Mill River. For a number of reasons that I can explain to you if you're interested, the original proposal, the original budget came in short, we were able to restore one field, only partially restore the second. This, this amount will provide for two batting cages for some shades for Field One, which we were not able to complete, and for irrigation of both fields. We've allocated fifty thousand dollars for an LSSC request to completely reconstruct the basketball courts at Mill River. These are heavily used facility, they're the only adult basketball court in town, they're in very bad shape. Last year, we allocated fifty thousand dollars for this project. It became pretty clear as soon as we got into it that, that was not going to be enough money, so this is completing that project. And this will involve a complete reconstruction of the surface, new hoops, and installation of two smaller hoops for younger kids to be allowed to use. A couple of historic preservation projects. The Ingram Dickinson Farmhouse on North Pleasant Street, which you may recognize as being at, on the North Pleasant Street side of Simple Gifts Farm, we're awarding them a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. This is for a preservation project that they're involved in to preserve this important building. They will eventually carve that house into two apartments, which will be used for farmworkers who work at the farm. This allocation will be for the exterior of the building, and they will be raising other funds for the interior reconstruction of the farmhouse. The Amherst Historical Society, we're awarding thirteen thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars to them to continue a study of their textile collection. We funded this last year. They got, they, they have a woman, Lynn Basset, who's a real pro in analyzing textiles, historical textiles, and once they really got into this project last year, it became clear that there was more work to be done that involves identifying these textiles coming up with different preservation methods, dating them, coming up with strategies for conserving them, so we're extending in essence that grant from last year. Strong House needs a new boiler, so we're funding a thirty thousand dollar sort of conversion project. There are two heating systems in that house now, I believe one is gas or propane, one is steam heat, and we're going to have one unified heating system, it'll be hot water from an oil burner. So that will get their heating system up into the twenty-first century. We also have some community housing proposals. One is a forty thousand dollar proposal to continue funding a consultant. The Amherst Municipal Affordable Housing Trust has been very lucky to have an incredibly skilled consultant to kind of walk us through some of these AMAHT proposals, and this is to support that consultant in planning and overseeing housing projects in consultation with the town and the housing trust. There's also an award for the housing trust for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is to have at their disposal with, working in concert with the town, a sort of kitty of cash to be able to jump on a potential project if it comes up, allowing them to be financially nimble enough to really act on a property that may become available rather than waiting through going through the CPA cycle. The Amherst Community Land Trust has asked for, and we've approved, a two hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred dollar grant. This is to, the, the land trust is going to identify two properties, ideally close to town centers, ideally close to public transportation, where they will purchase the properties, they will sell to qualified low-income buyers the homes on the properties, they will retain ownership of the land for perpetuity. So this allows these properties to be significantly less expensive for the homebuyers. And those homebuyers, of course, will be, will be vetted for their low-income status, lower income status. Amherst Community Connections has asked for, and we've approved, a hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollar grant. This is to provide three housing vouchers to chronically homeless Amherst residents. This will allow them to get into stable housing and to have support, life skills support while they're there and hopefully get them to the point where they are self-sufficient. They've been, Amherst Community Connections has been doing this for a couple of years, we awarded them a grant a while ago, it's been successful, so we want to continue that good work that they're doing. And lastly, pretty unglamorous, our administrative expenses, thirty-five hundred dollars. This is to pay our membership dues and the community preservation coalition and for public meeting notices and things of that sort, just a thirty-five hundred dollar allocation. And that's our slate.
Thank you. Are there questions? Or Mr. Buddington, if it's, yes?
This is actually not about all these wonderful projects, but in regards to your votes, because it's one of the things we always look at, is our, your split votes. And in your case, it just looks like there are a bunch of abstentions, and of course it, it's true that people never need to say why they're abstaining. Mr. Slaughter, for example, mentioned tonight that he works for the schools, but there aren't any issues that you feel anybody needs to be aware of associated with those abstentions?
No, there were two abstentions that involved a conflict of interest. One was the AMAHT proposal. One of our members had been on the board of that organization, and the other one was the baseball proposal, because one of the members, me, is on the board of Amherst Baseball. We had one member join us midway through and she abstained from a number because she didn't hear the present, the original presentation, so they were pretty non-controversial abstentions.
No controversy is good, thank you.
It is good.
Are there other questions? Is there anyone in the public that wanted to offer a comment or suggestion relative to the CPA article on town, on the town warrant? Give that opportunity since we still have folks here, so.
Because the only thing I would say is to Mr. Buddington, you did a great job of chairing this year, I know as a trying experience to take on that role for the first time and to report in the presentation or continuing part of that role. Having been the liaison in, to the committee and having been to a number of the meetings, not all, but a number of the meetings this year, I thought that it was a very open, fair, good process, and I really appreciated the guidance that you gave it, so thank you.
Yes.
Come a little bit closer so the camera can get you.
Jack, well, Madonna, please, and five. I just wanted to thank Dave Zomack for giving such a wonderful presentation during the TMCC bus tour, so I'm familiar with all of the things that you're talking about because Dave really gave a complete overview of them. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
Is there further discussion or, if not, then perhaps one of the motions on our motion sheet goes to Article Twelve and its parts, and maybe even, the debt authorization includes other debt, so.
I think that we have to do this as two separate motions, the way it's constructed.
Yep.
So I move to recommend to the April thirty, 2018 Annual Town Meeting, Article Twelve A, Community Preservation Act Annual Distribution of Funds in the amount of nine hundred fifty five thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars.
And there's a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, and it's four to zero with one absent, so if you want to go ahead and make the other motion.
And maybe I should note to my colleagues that I'd be willing to speak to that as a liaison if so requested. In Twelve B, a move to recommend to the April thirty, 2018 Annual Town Meeting, Article Twelve B, Community Preservation Act Open Space Bartering Authorization for Epstein Property Acquisition in the amount of a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars.
And there's a second.
That I would be willing to speak.
Okay. So Mr. Steinberg, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, and so that's, you have the one absent. So thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
So next on our list of articles for town meeting is a series of capital program items, equipment, buildings, facilities, bond authorization, bond authorization for water sewer, et cetera, et cetera, so Ms. Aldrich, are you coming to, to share some information with us on those items?
Bear with me on this because I came in on the tail end of all of this, so try to be as clear as possible.
So I will suggest, I'm presuming, I'll just have to check, but it's a pretty long list, we don't have to go through all the things that are going to be, you can hit the highlights, as it were, of the, of the things that are within any of the given articles, if you would prefer the a little more brief, because we could be here, well, Joint Capital Plan meets.
I love free.
A number of weeks in a row, so if there are certain ones that are of particular interest within any of each of those articles, that would be helpful.
So Article Thirteen and Fourteen are part of the Joint Capital Planning Committee Report, so all the information you ever needed to know about any of these capital projects can be seen in this report, and it is on the website in the town meeting page, and I believe in the, and it is on the JCPC website as well. This is broken down, Article Thirteen is the equipment purchase. First, I want to note that we kept to our nine percent in the capital plan as spending, but just as a little side, when we put our budget estimates together this year, we went with the nine percent for capital spending because the town manager feels it's very important to keep with our goal to ten percent. However, if you all remember, we had a four hundred thousand dollar deficit overall in our, in our revenue sources for the entire town budgets, town, school, library, and with the health insurance, that's with the health insurance deficit, we were still four hundred thousand dollars short. The contingency plan is if the state aid didn't come in significantly more, that we were going to reduce the capital to eight and a half percent. Town manager didn't want to do that. We did a lot of... We did a lot of scrounging around and we found three years of overlay surplus that we were able to release, which totaled $329,000. So we're staying with our spending of 9% in the capital plan. However, the funding source, we reduced the taxation by $300,000 and added $300,000 from overlay surplus to keep it at 9% and keep going forward, but still, but cover a good chunk of that deficit. We did receive a little more money in state aid with the houseways and means budget that came through. Most of that was in reduction of assessments. But we, our budget is now in balance going into town meeting, the overall town budget. And this is how we accomplished it. So I just wanted to get that on here. It's not in the JCPC report because it happened, of course, days after the report was done and printed and sent to town meeting. However, did get it in time for the finance committee book. So the funding sources in the finance committee book in Article 13 are as they will be at town meeting. Is that clear?
Perfect.
Perfect. Okay. I just wanted to get that out. So Article 13 is the equipment portion, and we are recommending $1,136,925 to fund equipment purchases. And of that, $260,000 will come from ambulance fund receipts, which will cover an ambulance which we are buying in this equipment list. That's one of the noteworthy things. And $300,000 of it is coming from the overlay surplus, as I just explained to you. In this article are things, software applications, cruisers, school bus, special ed van, furniture, backup generator for Fort River. And like I said, the list is online and it's also in the finance committee book, if anybody at home wants to take a look at it. Article 14 is the buildings and facilities portion of this. And we, this article appropriates $2,7864 from taxation for building repairs and maintenance of, and maintenance and facility improvements, and that includes roads. The town manager, it's on the next page. Wanted to get $1 million in for road repairs in addition to the Chapter 90 funding. We didn't quite hit the million, but you have $968,364. This includes energy management upgrade for school buildings, police station roof design and repair, town hall security, street lights. And the list is, like I said, in the, so I'm not sure if I need to elaborate, elaborate anymore on this.
Well, we think questions will come back to, but I'd say, carry on.
Okay, so that's, so Article 15 is a bond authorization for the transportation fund. And this is, I believe, 400, it's not in the article, but we'll be in the motion, an authorization for $450,000. And that is for the parking lot in front of town hall. And this is in conjunction with the North Common, what do I mean, to the North Common?
Renovating, restoring.
Restoring, yes. That's in combination with that. We wanted to do the parking lot at the same time that we are doing the North Common, which the money, the funds for the North Common came from CPA funding previously. Article 16 is bond authorization for the water fund. And this is to borrow $2 million for, to pay for replacement of water main and old water lines in conjunction with the Mass Highway work on North Hampton Road. That's about all I can tell you about that article.
I can say a little bit more about it, but I'll wait until you finish.
Article 17 is a bond authorization for the sewer fund. And this is for $1 million to replace the new gravity belt thickener. And they want, the thickener, the gravity belt thickener they have now is very old and it breaks down. They want us to continue maintaining that and use it as a, as a backup, but they need to replace the one that's used every day with this funding. And then bond authorization for Public Education Government Fund, which is Amherst Media. And this is part of the contract that was just recently signed by Amherst Media or ACTV and the Town of Amherst. And this, in that contract, town agreed to ask for a bond authorization for $410,000 to pay for cost of audiovisual equipment. This, the money that we're, the capital money that we're getting from this contract comes in over 10 years. I think the first three years was $95,000, and the next seven years is going to be $120,000. And in order for them to do this and do it right, they need the capital upfront. And the town said, the town agreed that we would ask for a bond authorization to do this when they were ready. I get that?
That is correct. And I actually have previously reported that to the select board when we constructed the warrant. I explained the nature of the contract and why the contract required that we put this on the warrant.
And the debt service events will be paid out of ACTV's portion of the capital that's coming in. Is there one point, one million, one point one two five?
Yeah. It's paid out of, I think, the revenues from Comcast, isn't it, that we received from Comcast in the contract with them.
Right.
They provided. And what we did was we agreed with Amherst Media, ACTV, to divide the money between the town and ACTV on an agreed upon method because we have expenses coming during the period of the long, of the length of the contract for replacing what we now call the INET. And in that whole negotiation, there was an agreement that we would do this, ask town meeting to authorize this in order to move more money, make more money earlier in the contract available to ACTV. And, but it all comes out in the end from the payments we will be receiving from our contract with Comcast.
Yes.
The other thing I'll note on that is that, can you correct me if I'm incorrect on this, but there's two revenue sources from Comcast. There's one that's related to the number of subscribers, and the other piece is a commitment by them for capital expenses. And so this is a dedicated resource that's not as dependent upon how many subscribers there are. So regardless of the number of subscribers over the next decade, that contract is still such that they will pay this capital portion of that contract to us. So the income stream is essentially guaranteed by virtue of that contract, which gives us additional confidence in sort of going into this debt authorization to help them get equipment in the short term. So I think at this point, unless you had anything else to add about all six or seven of these, I'm not sure. Do we have questions for, or yes, Ms. Wall?
You mentioned the much-needed work on the north parking lot in front of town hall. But given that there's been some kind of a scheduling change in the work of the North Common, these two projects are supposed to be coordinated, is that, Mr. Zollick may want to speak to this too. Does it make sense to do this without that? Or how can you talk about the interface between these two projects? Because there are some aesthetic as well as practical issues concerned there.
Sure, yes. I know that there has been some reference to these projects in the newspaper recently. So the plan has been slightly adjusted. Originally, back in the winter, we had hoped to design and kick off this project and actually build it construction during 18. Realistically, when we looked at schedules, when we looked at funding sources, and we looked at how much public involvement we wanted to have in that process, we, working with the town manager and staff and committee and board members, decided that more realistically, it made sense to kick off the design this year.
Right.
Have the design done in 18, bid it in probably February of 19 to be under construction for both the main street parking lot and the common together as soon after the colleges and the university graduate as possible. And we have that kind of sweet spot there when town is not as busy and we won't interfere with the movement of traffic and pedestrians as much. So that's really the plan.
So both of them are toward the end of the fiscal year?
Y- yes.
Same fiscal year, okay.
Christine Brestrop, the planning director, will lead that effort with, of course, some lead involvement with, by the historical commission. And two representatives have volunteered to be part of that effort, as well as two representatives from the LSSE commission. Because of course, LSSE and the historical commission really combined to recommend the North Common project. So I know that we are planning a kickoff meeting in May. That date is being finalized now. As you all know, dates in May with town meeting dates are challenging, but I know Christine Brestrop is working on that and we'll, we'll have that date to you as soon as we can.
Okay. So the short answer is because of same fiscal year, we're still safe here.
It's a borrowing authorization.
Right.
And we won't borrow money until we start spending the money, so it just.
Right. But it will be done in a, yeah.
So the other thing I will add at this point, just talking of bonding, I believe it's relative to the water fund borrowing, the $2 million to pay for water main system replacements on North Hampton Road. The Mass DOT has been, had actually had a meeting probably a year ago at this point, talking about some changes and renovations to Route 9 from essentially University Drive up the hill to Pleasant Street, that stretch of North Hampton Road, or I guess that is North Hampton Road in its entirety. They're, they have a fairly wide-ranging set of things they'd like to do there, including more sidewalks and multi-use paths and things like that. And so the idea behind this is that, well, while they've got this thing torn asunder, we'll pick some things underneath it that we need to attend to anyway. I will report that when the Piner Valley MPO, Municipal Planning Organization, meets next Tuesday, we will be putting out for public comment the, what they call the TIP, which is the Transportation Improvement Plan for the next five years. This particular project has been moved back a little bit, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't, if we can get authorization for that borrowing now, if, again, as Ms. Aldrich said, we wouldn't borrow the money until the project would come into, into reality. But that plan, that TIP plan, the, it's essentially the capital plan for the road projects in the, in the Piner Valley that use state and federal money. You know, it will be done with town meeting by the time it gets locked in. And they, technically, it's like our capital plan, it's, the coming fiscal year is solidly in place, the other four are subject to things moving around. And so it, while being pushed back a little bit from what originally was planned, which I think was probably federal fiscal year 20, it may go to federal fiscal year 21, but at the same time, this, this work may actually precede that work in some respects, so. But that's the intention behind this, while they're doing work on that stretch of, of the roadway, that we'll, we'll take care of, of the underlying water system at the same time. So we're trying to coordinate with the Mass out on that. Do we have other questions relative to equipment or buildings and facilities or other things that we?
I just have a numbers question on our motion sheet, which I know you don't have. But Article 13, capital program equipment, I believe you said $1,136,925. Because we know, we always fill in those numbers later, but since we're putting it on our motion.
Yeah, I think.
I'm just double checking, but I think the sources were slightly different.
That's where it's going to be different.
And that's what I just wanted to make sure we reflect that before we make the first motion.
Right. So just to confirm that, because the total amount, the $1,136,925 is, is correct. $264,000, the ambulance fund, is correct. The amount from taxation, right now is showing on our, on our motion sheet as $876,925, but you're saying this can be reduced by?
$300,000. So it's $526,000.
Okay, so it's exactly $300,000?
Yes.
You said $264,000.
$260,000.
I mean.
It's $260,000, it stays $260,000.
It's, okay, so, yeah, it says $260,000.
So the $876,925 number changes to $576,925.
Right. And then we need to mention the $300,000 from?
Overlay surplus.
Overlay surplus. So whoever would like to make that motion will have to get all those details right. Or at least Mr. Zollick will in our minutes, but.
I move to recommend to the April 30th, 2018 Annual Town Meeting, Article 13, Capital Program Equipment in the Amount of $1,136,925, of which $576,925 is from taxation, $260,000 from the ambulance fund, and $300,000 from the overlay surplus.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. That carries unanimously with one absent.
Yeah. And on all of these motions, Ms. Krueger will be making the motion as chair of the committee. And I think as has been prior practice, when it was Mr. Slaughter who was in that dual role, it's likely that we would just have her speak to it mostly to report our vote, but she wouldn't be saying anything separately in a likelihood.
Yeah. I agree. I think that's likely what we'll do.
So a bench is going to indicate speaker assignments.
Right.
Give them away to, cut it right down.
She's not here.
She's not here, and she's the chair, and so all those reasons are good reasons.
Yeah, all the, yeah, all the capital ones, she'll take those. So if we could have another motion unless there's other questions, but we'll take up, I presume, Article 14 next, as far as a motion.
I move to recommend to the April 30th, 2018 Annual Town Meeting, Article 14, Capital Program, Capital Program Buildings and Facilities, maybe we don't need to say capital program twice, Buildings and Facilities in the Amount of $2,7864.
Second.
There's motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous with one absent. And if someone would want to continue on, anyone?
Move to recommend to the April 30th, 2018 Annual Town Meeting, Article 15, Capital Program Bond Authorization Transportation Fund in the Amount of $450,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Got a motion to second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous with one absent. And Article 16, anyone?
Move to recommend to the April 30th, 2018 Annual Town Meeting, Article 16, Capital Program Bond Authorization Water Fund in the Amount of $2 million.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You made a call. Yeah. I move to recommend to the April 30th, 2018 Annual Town Meeting, Article 17, Capital Program Bond Authorization Sewer Fund in the Amount of $1 million.
Second.
All right. We have motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And so again, four zero with one absent.
And, and all of those, I'm assuming that we have agreed that Ms. Krueger is the speaker. On this last one, I'm going to vary from that one. But I move to recommend to the April 30th, 2018 Annual Town Meeting, Article 18, Capital Program Bond Authorization Peg Fund in the Amount of $410,000. Mr. Steinberg to speak on the article on behalf of the select board, sorry.
Got a motion to second. Did you that change on the speaker? Thank you. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. And one person absent, so it's a four to zero with one absent. I believe that takes care of it. All those articles, Ms. Aldrich, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Actually, Mr. Slaughter, if I could mention one thing.
Yes, please.
I wanted to, it's my fault because Ms. Krueger said, didn't you complain about something last year on the report? Well, tell me what it was you complained about last year. I'm like, really? I'm like, really? You want me to remember what I completely... But I remembered, one of the things was, which would be lovely, if we have a note for next time, to put the names of the representatives and their designations, you know, so and so and so and so from the select board, so and so and so and so.
Oh, they were.
Just like you're in the CPAC group.
Well, when I was chair, we made sure to get that in there.
On the, on the line, it looks like they're there.
Yes.
How is it possible that online they're there and they're not here?
It's the better one. Thank you.
That's interesting, and I love that. But when in the mailing, you didn't have the names.
Yeah.
So you might want to double check that nothing else changed, like...
Dollars.
A million to a thousand someplace. But other than that, great. So thank you for getting those things there. And the people who are looking at it online, let's see, that's awesome.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
So next on our agenda, under action and discussion items is Article thirty-eight. It's a petition article, a resolution relative to nuclear war. And so thank you for your patience this evening. We had a lot of other hurdles to get over in the meantime. But if you'd be so kind to introduce yourself and then tell us about your article.
I will. I'm Linda Fay, Precinct Nine. And I'll speak to support the resolution to pull back from the brink and prevent nuclear war. And to do so, I'd like to share an abbreviated version of talk that Dr. Ira Helfand, two-time Nobel Peace Prize winner, presented at the UN last Monday. As long as nuclear weapons exist, it's not a question of if they'll be used, only a question of when. For seventy years, the world has dodged a series of bullets, and we've been extraordinarily lucky. But we cannot depend on our luck lasting forever. If we do not eliminate these weapons one day, either by design or accident, they will be used. And statistically, there are some fifteen thousand nuclear weapons in the world today. Most of them are ten to fifty times more powerful than the Hiroshima bomb. Recent studies have shown that even a limited regional nuclear war using just a hundred Hiroshima-sized weapons will be a global catastrophe. Twenty to thirty million people will die in the first week as a direct result of the explosions of fire and radiation. But this is only part of the story. The fires will loft fifty million tons of soot into the upper atmosphere, blocking out the sun for more than a decade. The resulting climate disruption and catastrophic decline in food production will cause a global famine. And that is a limited nuclear war. So let us consider the consequences of a large-scale nuclear war by describing what an attack today on a city like New York would look like. To understand the devastation, let me use the model of a single twenty-megaton explosion. This model underestimates the destruction that will take place, but it's an adequate approximation. Within a thousandth of a second, a fireball will form, reaching out for three kilometers in every direction. Within this area, the temperature will raise to twenty million degrees, and everything will be vaporized. The buildings, the people, the trees, the upper level of the earth itself, they will all disappear. To a distance of five kilometers in every direction, the explosion will generate winds in excess of a thousand kilometers per hour and blast pressure greater than twenty-five pounds per inch. Mechanical forces of this magnitude will destroy anything that human beings can build. To a distance of nine kilometers in every direction, the heat will be so intense that automobiles will melt. To a distance of twenty-five kilometers in every direction, the heat will still be so intense that everything flammable will burn. Cloth, paper, heating oil, gasoline, plastic, it will all ignite, and hundreds of thousands of fires will coalesce over the next thirty minutes into a giant firestorm fifty kilometers across. Within this area, the entire area, the temperature will rise to eight hundred degrees Celsius. All the oxygen will be consumed, and every living thing will die. This is the danger we face. It's not the future that must be, but it's the future that will be if we don't eliminate nuclear weapons. To this end, a hundred and fifteen nations have signed a humanitarian... Hum... Min...
Humanitarian.
A humanitarian pledge, which was created by ICANN, again, the organization that won a nuclear, a Pulitzer Prize, a Nobel Prize. This legal instrument fills the gap in international law. And we propose that all communities in the Commonwealth support Back From The Brink, a call to prevent nuclear war. We call on the United States to lead a global effort to prevent nuclear war by renouncing the option of using nuclear weapons first, ending the president's sole unchecked authority to launch a nuclear attack, taking US nuclear weapons off hair-trigger alert, and canceling the plan to replace its entire arsenal with enhanced weapons, and finally actively pursuing a verifiable agreement among nuclear armed states to eliminate their nuclear arsenals. Once approved, this petition will be sent to Elizabeth Warren, Ed Markey, James McGovern, and President Trump. Many communities, including Northampton, have already supported the pledge at their town meetings. And we anticipate thousands of communities across the country will embrace the call and flood legislative offices with support. And we urge AMERCE to be among those communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there questions or comments from the select board? Mr. Steinberg.
I appreciate you bringing this forward to us for consideration and to town meeting for consideration. And I think you speak very eloquently to the issue, so I don't need to repeat what you've said. It has been policy of the select board in past several years that if there are petition articles that are resolutions, do not have a direct bearing on the operation or the budget of the town, that we defer to town meeting. And the judgment of town meeting on those motions do not make a recommendation. So I will probably suggest that this falls into that class where it really is a question of, for town meeting. And it doesn't mean that as individual members of town meeting, we wouldn't support and vote for something in that category, because we often do as individuals. But it's a question of whether the select board is, should be making recommendations. So, but I turned, ultimately, that's a decision for the board as an entirety, and I only said that as an individual.
Thank you.
Mr. Walton.
Always pleased to see and work with the petitioner. And I know Mr. Dr. Helfand is also a very eloquent spokesman. I haven't come to my class once, he scared the hell out of the kids. We accidentally were there the next day. I just, I agree with Mr. Steinberg. I, you know, just two comments in the margins here. I mean, I think, number one, the relative frequency of these kind of resolutions that have no practical bearing on town government, of course, is one of the things that helped to erode people's patience with town meeting. And number two, one of the reasons people were dissatisfied with town meeting is because it became very clear, many town meeting members did not understand complex articles such as zoning and housing and budgets, and had not done their homework or hadn't received adequate information. And so here, for example, some of these questions, such as whether to upgrade the nuclear arsenal with more accurate weapons, have been debated for years, at least since the nineteen eighties. You know, there are arguments on both sides of that. And I would simply submit that if town meeting members can't understand zoning, I'm not sure they understand nuclear weapons and technical, military, technological questions. But I'll leave them to you, vote your own conscience.
Well, actually, I'd be pretty disappointed, as would many people, if the select board didn't support this. I understand your previous history of not supporting articles that are not specifically related to AMERCE. But this is the very basis. I mean, if we, if we had a nuclear war, actually, the budget articles would be moot. I just am making a point.
I think that the rationale that we've used in the past is that, that, well, not the rationale, but if we, what we typically do is take no position, which is neither positive nor negative. So it, and, and that often sounds as though it's a negative, although it's, it's more about deferring to the judgment of town meeting relative to the article. So, so that has been our, our past practice, particularly on, on resolutions of this sort, because it really, I think, generally the intention most of the time of these kinds of articles is to get a sense of the body of town meeting. And, and we sort of yield to that, to that notion. And so we don't want to promote or push back against those sentiments. Mr. Wilson.
Following up on what you all said, I think that's, it may not appear as clear to other people, but since we've been doing this a while, that's how it appears to us. This is not a select board resolution. And so if it was brought to us as a kind of proclamation, then we might decide if we were going to, how much research we were going to do. And then we, as a select board, would say, as a select board, we believe this. For all the other town meeting articles, because we're part of the year-round government, we say, because our town government act says we're supposed to, we give recommendations on those town meeting articles. We do not interpret that to mean that we have to give recommendations on proclamations and petition articles. And so again, rather than the select board saying, we think town meeting, you should do this, because, based on what? So we, we kind of take ourselves back a step, as opposed to the capital planning that we've been involved in all year round. And so it doesn't mean we won't vote for it. It doesn't mean we don't agree with it. It's just that I think we've been trying to establish that line to make things a little clearer as to where we see our role.
Thank you.
So any other comments, or does someone want to move motion?
I move to take no position on the April, to the April thirtieth. It's not recommend a position, but the, the select board reports that they have taken no position. To the April thirtieth, twenty eighteen Annual Town Meeting, Article thirty-eight, petition resolution to prevent nuclear war.
Ms. Kruger to speak.
No position can be reported out by the chair.
I can probably do that. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Closed. So we have one absent, four in favor. Thank you for coming. Thank you for staying. Appreciate you sharing it with us and sharing it with the town, because that's also an important thing for you to do, is to get in front of the community with the, with the television. So that's helpful.
And thank you for listening.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Now, moving on to our next action and discussion item, which is four C, the establishment of a town charter transition committee. I believe it was on our, our desk this evening was a copy of it, if I can find the right piece of paper. Yes. So there should have been a pack of materials just clipped together, the top of which was a letter from, from the folks at Hampshire Cobb. But we're looking at the next page, which is the, the charts that Mr. Bachman put together, that basically brings forward the language as it's written in the, in the charter that passed in, in March. And I think for us, at this point, we have to, I think what we have to do is to think about this particular piece that is a, actually, we need to take relative to the charter passing. And, and in a sense, sort of fine-tune, you know, my understanding from feedback from a couple of members who've reached out to me individually is just, they want to articulate more specifically the tasks this particular group would take. As we go through the transition, it can be viewed as a, as a kind of more straightforward exercise, which I think, you know, the manager, and I'm going to characterize it as, he's, I think, sees it as a much more ministerial act of going through the existing bylaws that the town has and kind of making sure that there's a clear path for transitioning those to, to the new council form of government. I think there are lots of other more subtle, thorny, and problematic things relative to making the transition. Personally, I, I think those things, regarding transition, we may want to have a different committee do that. But I think articulating what this group is going to do, to what extent, would be the, the discussion we need to have tonight as far as trying to frame it a little, as precisely as you can. And think about how we would populate this with, with, with members. So I'm open to hearing people's suggestions, comments, et cetera. I also don't have any expectation we'll necessarily do all of that tonight. So, but I do want to see if people have opinions, have been read through this a little bit and thought about it, if they have some ideas. Mr. Steinberg.
So I, I think that the one thing that I would like to see this committee do, and I would like it to be in the minutes, is not necessarily rewording the charge to do something different in the wording of the charge from just picking up on the actual language in the Charter Commission report and the charter as adopted. But to also, as the body is looking at the changes that might be necessary in the bylaws as a result of the adoption of the charter, to use the opportunity to take a look at the bylaws in general, and if there are any bylaws that might need the attention of, future attention of the council once elected, for any number of reasons, including that they're no longer enforced, that they're no longer legal, that they're no longer necessary, whatever, that they're not sufficiently achieved, worded to achieve the purpose that was intended. If those types of things are found in the review of the article, that the committee not be shy about including those in its report.
Is there a motion?
No, it's a ton of motion, because I, I said that I was not suggesting it's a motion, but wanting it to make sure that something along those lines got into the minutes, if nothing else. Ms. Wilson.
So I'm going to try really hard to make this shorter, because I already talked about this a little bit when we first touched on it on April second. And my opinion hasn't changed. But the, the thing I want to, if I could first ask Mr. Steinberg to be, if I could be clear on the fact that what you are considering is adding a couple sentences to this to, you know, it will do what it's supposed to do, according to the charge. But just to be clear in the charge, we would also like to be clear that you can do this when you see, when you see the bylaws, which, if that is what you're talking about, makes me feel better about the whole thing. Because I have talked with four different members of the nine-member Charter Commission and gotten four different answers as to exactly what they believed this to be. So it's not as simple as, well, it's just what the words say. No, it's not just what the words say. There's a lot more to it than that, potentially, as we dig in. So, for example, I was wondering at first why this wasn't simply a KP law job, where they would sit down and say, oh, look, here's what bylaws they have, change all the references to this for town meeting. Although, as one Charter Commissioner pointed out, there might be some that refer to select board or town manager, and we would need to, there, there's more of a judgment call associated with that than there is with simply changing all the town meetings, find and replace kind of thing. Then, of course, there's also the issue, as Mr. Steinberg just pointed out. One of my favorite bylaws is the signed bylaw that was from nineteen thirty-nine about the select board permitting political signage on... about the select board permitting political signage on in public, on town-owned property, which was written, obviously, in response to the brand-new and exciting representative town meeting that was developed back then. And has no bearing on anything we've done in the last twenty years, at least than anybody can remember. So what I don't want, is I don't want the earnest people on this committee saying, oh, look, the select board had the power to issue political signage on town property. Therefore, now it's up to the town council to do that, or it's up to the town manager to do that. It's like, no, nobody's actually doing that because we know it's a bad idea. And so, trying to understand how we can put the people, and KP law doesn't know that either. They don't know, if I handed that to them, they don't know we're not doing that. They might tell us it's illegal or unwise, but they wouldn't know that we're not actually doing it because they don't know our bylaws that way either. And so I was concerned that, to some extent, this seems like a way of cheaping out on doing the project. It's like, really, we're gonna just have volunteers do something that attorneys should be doing? But from the standpoint of thinking about the judgment issues, it out, probably, you know, six of us in town know that we don't do that political permitting thing. So I don't know how we'd put somebody on the committee who knows that and knows to ask the question. On the other hand, you know, the, the thing, other things are much simpler. And I'm sure there's some other stuff in there too, that we're simply not doing because it's becoming illegal. You know, we're not in the situation where we're talking about pitching posts, at least, you know, our bylaws aren't that far out of date. But they are out of date. And, um, one of the charter commissioners mentioned that a colleague of theirs who had worked on their charter commission and on their bylaw review commission did find too, that theirs were out of date as well. And so they weren't able to separate out what those things were, and that helped them, that helped the future, um, council decide where to focus. You know, these things are the easy, obvious things. These things need more research, et cetera. They had a much larger, that was East Long Meadow in particular, they had a much larger bylaw review committee. When Mr. Bachman recommended three, which came up evidently in individual conversations, one thing I mentioned is that that then prevents any of those members from talking to each other. And we all, while we always discourage people to, from talking outside of posted meetings, and it's not just a quorum issue. It is also true that it's really awkward to really not let people talk at all. I don't have any idea how three-member select men, uh, bodies do it throughout the municipality. And the answer is they often don't do it very well. And so I'm a little leery about the three. But again, I'm concerned about who we put on it, not from the political standpoint. A couple of people have mentioned to me, not charter commissioners, but, well, actually, one charter commissioner, about people who are running or not. And I don't think that's relevant at all to this discussion. That separate committee that we've alluded to a couple of times, that might be dealing with other transition issues as we cut, as we run across them, might well need to appear not to be politically motivated in any fashion. But people who can review by, are willing to take the time to work with town council and the town manager on this. And to then go to, in my view, need to, you know, when they see something that's about signage, to talk to the town manager about talking to Mr. Mora, or about talking to the select board, knowing to ask about some of these things. I don't think that that has, anybody should have to count themselves in or out associated with whether or not they're eventually running for council or hoping to obtain some other position in the new form of government. So I think that pretty much covers all my concerns. So hopefully, one of you has a magic solution to all of that.
Right. Well, I think, you know, my brief conversations with managers, he, he did feel that the lion's share of the the work would be that, you know, would be undertaken by, uh, the town attorney, using that term. Because it is, you know, sort of finding all the instances of town meeting, town manager, select board, and what language changes need to go with that. But I think the, the secondary piece, you know, the, that, uh, you guys have alluded to relative to some judgment about, you know, either things being outdated or, or the practicality and that sort of thing, that's a, that's the second tier. That's definitely more in the, the rightful place for determining that is, is the committee members themselves, because they live here and, 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 uh, hopefully have some sense of that. But I do think it is an essential component, is to identify any of those that seem, uh, in need of a more significant refresh than just swapping out who's in, you know, the town meeting for town council and, and that sort of thing. So I think perhaps if we can, um, tidy up or add that language to some extent that Mr. Steinberg mentioned, that might do it. I think the other question that you raised, just about whether to have, I mean, we'd like an odd number, so if they can always come to a, if they're all there, to a majority. You know, whether we should go with five, perhaps. It is gonna be tedious, I think is maybe the best word to describe a lot of this, will be just kind of tedious work to, to go through these, but necessary. So as far as moving forward, Ms. Wall?
See, I mean, I agree with what my, my colleague said. And, and it was a chicken and egg thing. I, I, I can't quite figure this out either. Because if it's a matter of changing town meeting to town council, a monkey, or rather, an algorithm could do it. If it's a matter of things more complicated, then the town attorney should do it. So that's, you know, that's, that's one issue. I also agree about the number of three being rather small. I guess the other thing is that since Mr. Steinberg and Ms. Brewer mentioned they need to look at larger questions, I have the same question. How do you populate such a committee? Who knows that? So I have two thoughts on that, fairly incoherent. One might be that since we probably know some of these issues, or the town manager knows some of the issues, we might begin to develop a list of things for people to look at along the lines of what Mr. Steinberg said. But the other thing is, it seems to me, it might almost be necessary to create this committee in tandem with the other ones so we can be clear what the differential, differentiation between the roles is. I don't, that's probably what I'm puzzled by. I've had people ask me too, so, do you understand what the transition is gonna be? Are you guys gonna have two committees? And, I mean, the public is confused about this also.
Uh, I think the, the biggest concern in the short term relative to this, because the charter specifically has more.
Right, so this is written in the charter, right.
And, and it has a requirement that be formed, I think it said thirty days.
Right, I know we have the time pressure for that, obviously.
That's the real.
Yeah, I don't mean in tandem, yeah.
Difficult point, but I, but I, I think that if we decide to form a second group to, to sort of analyze some of these things, to, to draw those in parallel, draw them up in parallel, distinguish those differences is important as well.
Yeah, by tandem, I just been thinking about them the same way, because obviously, time pressure does bear on this one.
Right. Mr. Steinberg, do you have a thought?
I was actually, I need to look at the calendar. Do we have, um, another meeting before the thirty days expires? I think we.
We have a packet for Monday.
Yeah, Monday, we, so we could have it come back on Monday.
That's right. I, I kinda thought it might.
I think that what, um, could be considered is the addition of a sentence. And the reason to do this, to do this as a single one is, you're looking at the bylaws anyway, so they're doing the work. And as you're going through the bylaws, if I go through the bylaws twice, you have two separate groups going through the bylaws. Something along the lines of, and I'm, we don't have to just craft it tonight, because, um, Mr. Bachman may have some suggestions on wording too, but the committee shall also review the bylaws to determine whether they are serving their intended purposes and make recommendations to the council elect as appropriate.
Ms. Brewer?
Oh, yeah, I to- I totally agree. I didn't, just to be clear, I didn't mean that we should have separate committee for the bylaws as opposed to the wording of the bylaws, but just, there has been talk of a different transition committee, and that it's, we should, I think, as soon as possible, figure out what the, if we need one, and so with the charges. But I, I quite agree, the encouragement to look at bylaws in general can go here in one place.
Yeah. Ms. Brewer, anything you wanna add?
Beyond wanting to be more specific, as I always do, associated with the references to ten point seven U and ten point seven V, because it's not term of appointment until terminated. Normally, that means that it's either an ongoing or a time-limited committee. Those are the two choices for that box. And until terminated is not, that just sounds bad. But in fact, it does, that language is pulled out of the charter, which does indicate that when the council appoints the new version of this, it may very well bring all the same people over, but that this particular committee is terminated. And so we'll just find a way to reference ten point seven U and V there to make that clear, that it's not, it, it doesn't expire the day town council gets elected. It expires when town council decides it does, based on what the charter says. And so that is more or less until terminated, but it just, just wait to see. Special municipal employees is not an S there, but it's special municipal employee status. And yes, we would wanna give people that because, of course, they might also be serving on conservation commission or something like that. And so that would be appropriate. One of the things that I think I've gone back and forth with the town manager about associated with this is while the charter indicates, we, we have to do this, right? Just like we have to put that question on the annual, on the town, on town meeting board, we put it on a special town meeting board. We do not generally, for many of our committees, well, let's, perhaps I should rephrase that. We have a varying amount of responsibility we take on for various committees that we appoint. Some of them we're very hands-off with, some of them we go to every time they meet. Some of them, we work closely with them to make other things happen. Others just are kind of doing their own thing, and yeah, we appoint them, but, you know, kind of that's the end of the story. Not saying all that's good, that's just the reality of, of where we're at, because there's limited time and energy to go around. This is a committee that we're required to appoint. We just have to do it. I'm a little uneasy, given the importance of the committee, of just saying, okay, off you go, bye-bye. And you report to the town council at the end, and I don't get to hear from you ever again. So I'm actually encouraged by the idea of adding the sentence about bylaw review in general. And I'd like to somehow say, because we usually have much longer charges than this, that something along the lines of showing that the expectation is they will talk to people. That they, and I know that seems obvious, but I don't think we should assume it's obvious. And that they will talk to, of course, to talk to staff, they need to go through the town manager, but that they will talk to, you know, if there's, if there's one about AGCOM, for example, that they talk to AGCOM, or somebody from AGCOM, not just make assumptions based on the things that they know. Because we're planning that we're gonna appoint, that's the whole point of figuring this out, is who are we gonna appoint to it? And we want them to be people who are familiar with things. They're not gonna be as familiar as we are, is the reality. But, um, I wanna make it clear somehow, something to the effect that their work will be informed by interactions with other committees. So I'm not saying they're gonna have to go to committee meetings, or the committees are gonna have to appear in front of them, but to show that there's the expectation, that they're not just working in a bubble. And, because they're not just doing a find and replace. They are doing the other work too.
Does anyone think we need to have one of the, one or more of the select board members be a part of this?
Ms. Kruger?
I'm sure she'd appreciate that if we offered that, uh, while she's gone. I'm not saying I have an opinion about them, just offering that as a suggestion to, you know, carry some intent and some experience into this. But at the same time, um, it doesn't necessarily have to be that way.
I believe it was mentioned in the initial discussion, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think the, the idea of, of whether one of us should serve, or more than one of us should serve to help bring that experience to it. But I don't know if we should or not. I'm, okay, people have different opinions about that. Ms. Brewer?
So along those lines, yeah, I've been wrestling with it too, is, um, I'm really busy. And so this is going to be interesting work, but we still, we're not giving anything up while we're doing this at the same time too.
Right.
So, um, the ten, while my initial temptation was to ensure that a select board member and a charter commissioner were on it, because again, that whole, you know, four people, four different answers, but nine people, nine different answers. But, um, just to have some continuity, you know, when there's a question of, well, what did you mean by this? What was the discussion that went behind that? And they would, that would be helpful to have, rather than having to go and find them, so to speak, to have them be. But I was also even wondering if we wanted to somehow make a select board member and a charter commission member, like, associate members, which is not something we typically do. We normally have, you know, we normally just have our liaison role, which we all fulfill in different ways. Some much more diligently than others, and others just, you know, depends on the committee. But I, this is an unusual thing, so maybe we do an unusual thing. And we consider having non-voting associate members, not liaisons, but non-voting members. So the idea would be that you're responsible, so that they, that the select board member and the charter commissioner are responsible for being the point person for those two organizations. So there is somebody that's responsible beyond the town manager and KP law. But then they don't necessarily have to go to every meeting, and they don't have to be the ones doing the find and replace work.
You're not, you're not altering the quorum of two, of three, two?
If you take those two off, then you can have any number and have them as associate non-voting members. You can have any size body you want.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think if you did that, what you probably wanna do is not, is leave the number of voting members is, is in the, in the associate members section immediately under, above the bold line. I also amended, tried an amendment to my sentence, uh, to capture some, to capture what you just said. So that the sentence could read, and I have this, so you don't need to copy it down. This is on that, I can get it to you later. The committee, um, to consider this language, the committee shall consult with appropriate staff boards, committees, and members of the public, and also review the bylaws to determine, and the rest is the same, whether they are serving their intended purpose and make recommendations to the council elect as appropriate.
That sounds good.
So that it captures all, both of the thoughts that have come forward in this discussion, and to, um, send this along to, uh, Mr. Bachman, who knows, let him use his judgment.
Is that a motion?
We're appointing it, what judgment is?
Well, unwording.
I'm being a little bit difficult here, right?
No, I mean, you may have different wording that you would suggest.
Ah, to get those words across. So, so I feel like that's done, so that's good. And so now what about the membership? So what about, I mean, this crazy idea that obviously we're hearing for the first time, because we can only do this in a posted meeting, of associate members, and then, and then just the three core still makes sense. And so therefore, the three core would not be a select board member, a charter commission member, they would be three members of the public. I know individuals have contacted some of us and have written to us as a board, et cetera. We've, we don't have time to do the CAF process at this point, and it's not necessary anyway. But in terms of not only getting this charge done next week, we need to be thinking about bringing members forward next week.
I don't think we have to have it populated, right, I think just, I think we just have to do it four.
Oh, come on. You can't form a committee that doesn't have people.
Oh, it says, it says shall, it says shall appoint, so I guess, no, it's just, it says appoint, not form, yeah.
Forming a committee, yeah, shall appoint a committee. Sorry, guys.
Point means members.
That means people, not just a charge. I know, that's how we normally do it, right? We argue about the charge for a few weeks, then we, then we solicit people to be on it. We already got people asking to be on it who don't even know what to do.
I think it's the second committee, not this one.
That's cool. So a three-member committee prevents discussion about open meeting law, but it's mainly technical stuff anyway. And then still, does three people give them enough to go out and talk to other people other than the charter commission and the select board? Does it give them enough bodies to go around and do stuff? I, I don't know. I mean, the bigger we make it, the less individual members will do. We know, we know, we know, that's human nature, that people slack, if you give them the chance. And then two people end up doing all the work anyway.
Yeah, the associate sounds accurate.
We don't have to be, because otherwise, it would be, for example, a charter commission member, a select board member, and some other portion who's not one of those two things. But, or a five-member board that had those two things on it. So why not just go ahead and have a three-member board and then non-voting members? Because then that kind of takes us out of the, you're talking to everybody thing. It doesn't put us, when I say our one member, responsible for talking to the whole. responsible for talking to the whole world about it. It's serving as a resource on a regular basis, a slightly amped up liaison position, basically. And same for charter commission, that they get together, I don't know if they're gonna get together amongst themselves or whatever they can do, but to say, okay, who's gonna be the one that's done this enough that you would be willing to be on call, even if not to go to the meetings. Because I will say that the East Long Meadow group apparently met nearly every week for a year. Maybe they had more bylaws than we do, but we do have a hundred, a little over, we're about a hundred and three pages, so. Not even counting so.
Another Henry, the deadline built into the charter, which is helpful in this regard.
This group, right, because they can all, they can all feel like they can quit to the council, so.
Let me ask this, this sort of procedural question. Do we feel sufficiently confident in the, the language that Mr. Steinberg made and perhaps the membership suggestion that Ms. Brewer's made that we could um, perhaps have a motion and take, take a vote on that? Or do we want to have that just by consensus and have those two pieces put into it and brought to us on Monday to take action on or, or, um, and then potentially be between now and then trying to solicit some potential members? Because it was, it was thirty days, the deadline, is that right? So thirty days from the twenty seventh, it's gonna be like the twenty fifth.
Are we gonna have a full?
Thirty-one days and that's it.
Are we gonna have a full complement on Monday of this body?
I believe so, even the scrubs back.
And the town manager.
And the manager back.
There could be some logic to doing it then, since we seem to have the language figured out.
Right.
But we need to, we need to go ahead and start soliciting members now.
Yeah, but.
Even now, if we know what we're soliciting them for.
Right, right, right. So I I guess the question that I'm posing is, do we want to vote to set the charge based on the couple of things we talked about? Or do we want to leave that, take it up on Monday and appoint people on, or suggest people for uh, membership? Because we will probably have to appoint people on Monday if we're gonna meet the deadline of appointing a committee.
Yeah, the other problem is we're not gonna have all their names and time to post them.
Right.
Couldn't I consider?
We don't need to necessarily just say appoint members.
Um, normally for.
Normally we don't, but we don't have to.
This is the rule.
No, normally we do actually have to appoint name, we have to list names on the agenda. That was an open meeting law decision a few years back. So that the public could say, what?
Right.
Um, those are the people you're appointing. So I think that the reality is we don't have enough time to do that. And so we do say what you just said, Mr. Steinberg, we appoint members. And we vote on that Monday night, and if people have a problem with that, we'll hear about it.
And you can change members.
And if we, and if we, and if we don't end up being able to appoint because we don't have sufficient number of members that meet the qualifications we see. I'm not sure who's going to object that we've missed the thirty-day deadline by a few days and put it up for one more meeting to give us that time.
That'd be the first time to tell me.
It could be, um.
What are the, what are the qualifications we're looking for, I guess, is the other question.
That's the question, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, to the extent that we have people who um.
They're supposed to be willing.
They have to be willing, they have to be familiar with um, bylaws and the purpose of bylaws and have had some experience with the operation of bylaws in Amherst or another community. But I'm not sure that I would, I'm not, I wouldn't put that qualifications into the charge because that would complicate.
Yeah, no, there's no, yeah.
What I would suggest is um, having the section, associate members being a member of the charter commission and the select, and a member of the select board may also participate as non-voting members and so that is associate members.
I'm not good with saying may, though. Because that implies that they don't have to show up, or they don't have to be available, I guess what I'm trying to say. How do we say that they, they will be available, but they don't show up?
Well.
We could appoint those certainly without any difficulty.
Because what, what I'm trying to get across is they need to be, that person, those two people need to be responsible for giving feedback when they're asked, not they may get to participate if they happen to show up.
But I presume that they wouldn't sign on without the understanding, because we know that the select board members are all highly responsible people.
Well, and so are all the charter commission members, but we're, we're, we need to be clear that we are expecting them to be available, just not necessarily attend every meeting.
I'm willing to put in will participate as opposed to may also, but um, if you do that, um, just looking at what we've already said amongst our group, who's gonna raise their hand?
We're gonna draw some draws.
Because it will still be up to the three members to organize, I, I don't, we're not gonna, we're not gonna use those words, the committee shall organize itself.
Organize itself.
That's coming right out of this charge, that doesn't go there.
What does that mean?
Um, but at any rate, um, but they will have their, they will have their own chair.
You could just start with the town manager. Yeah.
And so that person.
That's maybe, that's what that's intended to be, they will elect a chair.
Will prevent, will prevent the select board member, the select board associate member and the charter commission associate member from running the meeting. They will, they will do that, because they will have their own chair.
I mean, isn't that what's intended by shall organize, that the committee shall at its first meeting elect a chair and whatever?
Why would you ever say that? That's what every committee does.
I know, I'm not sure why it's here otherwise.
Yeah, I don't, it doesn't work.
I think it starts, it's fine to start with the town manager should provide logistical support and just leave it at that, right?
Yeah.
That's what I would do.
That makes sense to me. Right, we never tell them who their chair's gonna be, they get to decide that and they always have to tell the chair because somebody's gonna be in charge. And it does not say in the charter that they have to organize themselves.
So just to uh, sort of close the loop here a little bit, so did, so as far as um, the description of the charge, the addition that Mr. Steinberg suggested will be added. Two associate members, non-voting associate members, one select board member, one charter commission member. Do we need to find that associate membership, is that, I mean, that's sort of what you were, were getting at was trying to articulate the sort of their role.
Right. Yes, since nobody knows what it means.
Right.
We don't, we don't have associates.
Do we need to put that as, as a line in the sort of charge relative to those?
Yes.
As opposed to, so um.
I think Mr. Steinberg has some wording.
Right, so you have.
Yeah, I mean, the one thing that was the big difference is changing the words may also to shall participate as non-voting members.
Or even if you wanted to say be available. I mean, I know that this is all unusual wording, but if you can find something that sounds closer to that, as opposed to, because I'm not even saying they have to show up at meetings.
Yeah, well, I mean, you know.
It could just be that there's a bunch of email that goes back and forth between one of the three members and the charter commissioner.
Yeah.
And then they report out on that when they have their meeting. Or maybe one week the charter commissioner comes and then after that it's just email for several weeks.
Well, either they're associate members or you put them put it at the bottom.
So you could say.
With the town manager, with, with, for the town managers and say down there that a member of the select board, a member of the charter commission will assist the committee as, as needed.
Yeah, maybe that's the way to go, so you don't touch this, right?
Right, right.
You just leave this alone, it still says three up here. And just the, just where it now starts, the town manager shall provide.
Oh, like down here, yeah.
You just add the, to that sentence.
Yeah. Add another sentence afterwards.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. And then that way, we say to the charter commission, after we leave here tonight, um, one, one of you needs to be available and it actually doesn't always have to be the same person for that matter either, necessarily. But um, you need to be available to this committee, just like somebody from the select board needs to be available to this committee. So you're gonna start getting meeting notices, you're gonna have to sh, go to some of the meetings.
Right.
You're gonna have to serve as a resource to them. And if you can't do it, then you ask one of your colleagues to do it, you know, because there's nine of them, so they can split up if they want. I don't think, and that way we don't have to appoint them.
Hmm.
That way we could just say, because it's not like there's suddenly gonna be new charter commissioners, mainly. They just, they exist and so they could just choose amongst themselves who's gonna go. Who's gonna get the notices, right? Somebody has to get the notices.
Well, I think for consistency's sake, it would be best if one primarily did it, obviously.
Yeah, but we would, what I'm saying is we wouldn't have to make that appointment necessarily. We could just say, just like we're not having to say they have to talk to the DPW director, we're saying we go to the town manager and he figures out who they talk to. So I'm just saying to simplify our own lives.
Right.
We don't have to decide it's one of nine and then they change their minds because they're going out of town for three months and then we have to pick, we have to appoint a new one. It's like, whatever, do it amongst yourselves. But um, you can see where I'm going with this.
Right.
Volunteer and then say, oh no, you can do it, get it, somebody else will do it. But that way we can focus on just the three voting members and finding out who they are.
Okay, I'll write this up and send it to Mr. Steinberg and Mr. Bockman tomorrow.
Do we think we need to take formal action on, on, I mean, we've discussed the content, what, what uh, we want to have written in? Uh, do we think we need to take a formal vote of that charge as, as described?
Second.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, so then we'll, so just to be clear, we're gonna keep the membership at three. We're going to add a sentence that says, a member of the select board and the charter commission shall provide support as needed and appropriate. We'll take out the, the committee shall organize itself and the, off that and just start with town manager, or the town manager shall provide logistical support and access to town attorneys appropriate. We'll also have a sentence that says that the committee will.
Uh. The committee shall consult with appropriate staff boards, committees and members of the public and review the bylaws to determine whether they are serving their intended purposes to make, making recommendations to the council elect as appropriate.
All right, so those are the component pieces we're adding to the document and we're taking away from the document. So I will make that as a motion as the charge for this group, if someone would like to second that.
I would be happy to second that. I wonder if we can add one more sentence, which is just at the bottom, just almost a throwaway. But to make it clear that this is the general bylaws, not the zoning.
Oh, right.
Because rather than keep like calling it general bylaw review committee and all that jazz, just leave the words alone because they say bylaws. But they, they do say elsewhere in zoning is not within this period. And so.
Right.
Maybe just have a single sentence at the bottom that says, rather than sticking in parentheses or like with an asterisk or something, just a single sentence that says
I'm thinking.
the bylaws subject to this committee are currently general.
I'm not sure that, if we just put it right into the, in what's already written in.
Yeah. Right, so.
The site shall appoint a committee to review, to begin to review the town general bylaws.
That's what I was gonna suggest too.
Want to just stick it in there, even though that's not verbatim what the charter says?
Yeah, because it says in accordance with the, of course, it's in accordance with the charters, it doesn't say it, of course, such charter.
Right.
Otherwise you could put it in the title of the committee.
And in fact, I'm not sure we, we have to call it charter bylaw review committee at all, I think we could call it general bylaw review committee.
General bylaw. Yeah. General bylaw review committee, because that way it's clear you're not messing with the wording of the charter.
Yes, that's a good idea. Let's just change it to general bylaw review committee, take the word charter out of it, charter's in the, in the body. So if anybody's doing a search, they can find it.
Plus, I mean, the town manager providing direction and the rest of us from the town attorney would at some point remind people not to mess with the zoning bylaws.
But it would be good to just have it right in there.
Right, right, right.
Good idea, and that, all we have to do is change the title of the committee, that's good.
Yeah, and then we have the text to it.
In terms of, of this template where it says town bylaw, what that's actually supposed to say is legal reference. And so it's not town bylaw, it's legal reference, because the Home Rule Charter is not a bylaw.
No, that's true.
That's not a bylaw I get to review. So it's just a legal reference.
Yeah.
Right.
Sometimes it's MGL, sometimes it's town meeting action.
Do we talk about, yeah, we're talking about creating authority, do we just talk about legal reference?
Yeah, so usually it's legal reference.
So I think we have the, the content there, I'll take those last couple of edits as, really, as a motion.
The, the one thing before we vote on the motion, would it be kinder to, um, in more, in more politic, to thou take what we have done and send it to members of the charter commission for, in case they have any comments before we vote on it and vote on it on Monday?
I think if you want to do that, you can, but I don't think we're required to do it in any fashion, I don't think we're doing anything weird. And I think we've talked to enough of them.
We, we've just volunteered one of them, just to join up the meetings.
Yes, but I think they kind of assumed that was kind of cute.
Well, you have some different.
I, I just don't feel like we have time.
I'm sorry, yes, if you want, come a little closer so the bike can, on the camera can pick you up.
Yeah.
Sure.
Jacqueline Maidana, present five. I just want to remind you that only five people on the commission voted in favor of this new charter. So I get a little nervous when you suggest having one member of the charter commission, because it was really divided. And um, and I went to a lot of those meetings and people were really bullied. And I feel like I would be very cautious in your selections of the people that you're going to be putting the future of this town in their hands, because the bylaws are really important. And um, so I think, thinking long and hard before you select someone from the five members who voted in favor when four didn't. So perhaps what your suggestion about maybe rotating, that was kind of an interesting suggestion, but um.
Well, I had no intention of it necessarily being one that voted in favor, just one of the nine, was what I was looking, regardless of how they felt about it, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, but, but it would, it, yeah, I. I just have a strong feeling that it would have been maybe like the chair.
Mr. Wall?
Oh, I was gonna say, I, I, I was gonna say I appreciate that, but I'm not sure I do.
Right.
The, first off, we didn't say whom we're gonna appoint, but also it's pretty much a technical thing, you know, is this, does it bylaw have to change from town council to some, I mean, to town meeting something else, or have we not used the signed bylaws as nineteen thirty-nine? I think were we to try to undertake a change to the bylaws of the type you're concerned about, that would be violated in the spirit of the charter, which says we shouldn't undertake any kind of radical changes to them. I think if we have a second committee, we talked, that's why I think we spoke about, if we had a second committee on transitions, we'd be more careful about whether people were running for office or not, because that might be getting more into subjective areas, so.
Right.
I hope that's the case.
Ms. Brewer, give it a go. Thank you. Okay.
That'll do, so you run out of battery?
Yeah, would you guys mind pausing for like four seconds so I can switch out?
This would be a great time for a recess.
Uh, are, do we really, can we finish up in ten minutes?
Um, I need, I have six minutes.
She's done. Six minutes.
So if you could finish in three, that would be awesome.
Six minutes. Finish in three.
So I think this topic, we can finish in three.
Yes.
So I think the real question is, do we, um, we do have a motion on the floor and we can decide not to take action on that, which is to, to, to vote for the charge as we've talked about inside it. Or we can wait.
I'd like to vote for the charge and then it will go in our packet Friday, it will be uploaded and we will be able to say to the charter commission, we can assign one of us to do that, to say, charter commission, notice that we are doing what you told us to in the charter and here's what it looks like and if you have any thoughts about that, please let us know.
Right, because we could amend our charge on Monday if we needed to.
Exactly, so maybe you could even make a note that maybe Ms. Pupple could let them know as soon as it's edited.
Okay, does that sound amenable?
Yes.
All right, so is there further discussion? All right, hearing none, we're voting for the edits to the charge and so that will become the charge of the general bylaw review committee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post? So we'll take a short recess at this point. Thank you all for that. That was unanimous, by the way, four to zero with one absent. And so let's, uh, return to our, uh, our meeting here from our, our brief break, and, and we'll, uh, let's go into, uh, section seven of our agenda, where we have a common victual license, and then we have a consent calendar, so if, if someone would like to read those motions, we'll take care of those two bits of business. Which are on the last page, three of our motion sheets.
Yes.
What's the current, isn't this at One Boltwood? Mr. Zomack, hell no.
Was currently there?
I don't know.
One Boltwood?
Um, I believe Honeycrisp is going to share space with?
Balance?
Yes, with Balance.
Balance, the one that's on the back of the, yeah, that's only seen from the garage.
It's my understanding, yes. And I believe there's a, a discussion of even sharing the kitchen space as well.
Okay. That's part of that, that's interesting.
I just like the name, but if you wanna read the motion, please.
I move to approve the application of Honeycrisp Chicken Incorporated for a common victular license to operate a restaurant on the premises of One Boltwood Walk, Amherst, on Sundays through Saturdays, Sundays through Saturdays, from twelve PM to eleven PM. Joe Deng, manager slash owner.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? All right, so that's unanimous, one person absent, if you wanna continue on?
I move to approve the items listed on the consent calendar for the April eighteen, twenty eighteen agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And we have one absent. So it's unanimous, one absent. So that takes care of all of section seven. Uh, I, so we have, um, one last thing, I'm sorry, under, under our action and discussion items, which is the adoption of an alternative posting method for notice of meetings of public bodies. This allowed under the Municipal Modernization Act, I believe, allows us to declare our website as an official posting place, so we no longer have to have something posted and public facing in the, in a physical sense, in the same way we have had in the past. Uh, one of the reasons for this is, I guess, the screen we've been using, that's been displaying out the doors of Town Hall, it's not functioning right now, and it brought up the point that we could make the town website the appropriate, um, venue for that. And so I think it's a matter of a motion and a.
Where's the motion?
There's no motion is the problem.
Ah, therein lies the rub. Is it in, well, is it in our, um, there was a memo, I think, from.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's fairly simple. I move to approve uh, an alternate, um, as a posting method for notice of meetings of public bodies, the use of the town website.
Could we add that?
Could we add, should we, let's add the MGL part.
Yeah.
As.
Mr. Steinberg, this part here.
Yes. Okay, it provided Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Four, Section Seven.
Chapter Four, Section Seven. Is there a second?
Oh, I'm sorry, you know why that didn't sound right? That's how you define a chief executive officer, it's a common law, Chapter Four, Section Seven.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
What we're looking for is?
There's no part of it that's included here, but.
Posting methods.
Um, it's not, it's Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty A.
Yeah, it's not this last paragraph.
You, you could just say Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty A, and that gets you a bill of meeting law, and that's closing that.
That's true, that covers everything, yeah.
Okay.
So amended as.
Suggested there?
Suggested.
All right. So it's Chapter Thirty A, I believe, I heard? And making the town website the official, uh, method for noticing a mo- of meetings of public bodies.
Yep.
We had a second correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, place the, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? So that's unanimous with one absent. Let that one slip.
Mr. Steinberg?
Yes.
Very minor issue, but if Mr. Zomack would correct our minutes on the, um, special licenses for top of the campus. I, I was like, really? Is that a new building? It's not Thomas Hall, it's Thompson.
Hmm.
In the first one.
Oh, yeah, it's correcting the agenda.
It's, um, somebody, Spelch made an assumption.
Yeah. And I think the actual application hit Thompson Hall on. All right.
Excellent.
So that takes care of that. I think all that's left at this point is the manager report. Uh, we have one item I wanna bring up under the, under nine, uh, under nine, which is topics I didn't anticipate forty-eight hours before the meeting, but I'll check in with, with, uh, the assistant town manager, do you have anything that you need to report to us?
I do not, no.
Okay. Do any of us have anything we need to report? I don't, I can't.
I would like to briefly.
Yes, please.
State that the town meeting warrant discussions are coming up, what we used to call precinct meetings, but they're open to anyone in town. And they start actually on Monday, the twenty-third, during our meeting, so we're meeting in Town Hall. But TMCC is gonna be meeting here, in this lovely refurbished room. Um, and then on Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, also at seven PM at Crocker Farm. Thursday, the twenty-sixth, at seven PM in the Professional Development Center at the middle school. And Saturday, the twenty-eighth, at two o'clock in, oh, my mistake, Saturday, the twenty-eighth to two o'clock is in this room. The one on Monday, the twenty-third, everyone, is at UMass Police Station. So it's UMPD, so it's up there, it's the top of Eastman.
Near the fire station.
Up by the fire station. So it's the UMass Police Station on Monday, and on Saturday, it's here in this room at two o'clock. So if you're a day person, it's two o'clock here, and the other ones are all seven o'clock at night. And the other thing I should point out is they're not meeting on the twenty-fifth, which is good, because that's the night we're doing economic development with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. That's the thing we've been trying to get more people interested in coming to, because they're gonna give us a preliminary report at six o'clock that night, as I recall, does that sound right, Mr. Zomack? So, um, so good, so there's things to go to every night next week?
Yes.
Being a plugging event.
That's right, yes.
We need on the twenty-fourth, at seven PM, Crocker Farm School, we will be kicking off with our design team, the design and public meetings for, uh, Goff Park. Uh, the renovation of Goff Park. So that's seven PM on the twenty-fourth, Crocker Farm School. Uh, it'll be hosted by members of the LSSE Commission with support from staff. Our design team consists of LSSE members, uh, town engineer, uh, Alan Snow from DPW. Nate Malloy will be heading up that group, and we have chosen the Berkshire Design Group from Northampton to design the renovations, including Spray Park, playground, uh, pavilions, shade structures, et cetera, so.
And I know the, the details of that are on the website, because I saw it today, so that's on the little scroll across the front of the fr- front page, and I think those others maybe as well.
Next week? They are. Yes. And we will have, uh, I've previewed them a little bit, but we'll have some broad concept ideas for people to respond to, which will be really exciting to actually see some color renderings of what could be there. Uh, we're not starting from scratch, per se, but, um, we've had a number of public meetings back in sixteen and seventeen on that project. So we took all of those ideas that came from surveys and public meetings, and Berkshire Design's gonna come with some ideas for folks to, uh, kind of riff off of, so it should be exciting.
Great, okay. Ms. Brewer?
So that's at Crocker Farm Cafeteria.
Correct.
And TMCC is holding the warrant discussion in the Crocker Farm Library that same night. So you need to go and steal all the people who are at the warrant discussion, they can come over to Goff Park. Um, are they both at seven?
They are.
Okay, so it's gonna be a busy night at Crocker Farm. And if I might make two others, Mr. Slaughter, I'm, I'm sorry, these are more announcements than reports, but I wanna make sure they get out there for, so this does get edited in time, which is that our longtime moderator, Harrison Greggs' funeral is on Saturday. Calling hours are from five to seven on Friday, at South Congregational Church, which also happens to be in the same time that GTI is holding their required community outreach meeting at the Knights of Columbus Building at five PM, Friday night downtown. So there are many, many different things for people to be going to, but Mr. Greggs' calling hours and funeral are this weekend.
Thank you for announcing that. So, uh, I don't have a report, per se. Uh, do, does anyone else have anything to report? So the, I think the one last thing, that wasn't technically on the agenda, other than it was not reasonably anticipated until less than forty-eight hours before this meeting, was we received a memo from town, our town attorney, or attorney, because there are two of them that worked on this, regarding, uh, transition provisions. And this is in particular relative to things which town meeting can take up that, um, uh, comply with the new charter and, and laying some definition to the, the phraseology that's in the charter about not frustrating the implementation of the new charter and, uh, doing the essential and necessary things of the town in the meantime. So I wanna make sure that, uh, we've mentioned that it exists. Uh, this has been shared out amongst, uh, boards and committees. And I want, uh, us all to sort of read through carefully and think about it a little bit over the, over the ensuing days. We will take it up again on, uh, our meeting on Monday, in case there is, uh, concern or not with what's in, included in this. I don't wanna get into that tonight too much, other than just to say, uh, it provides us a bit of a framework. We may then, uh, you know, take the advice as is, or we may take the advice and ignore some of the advice. And so, um, I did wanna mention that it, it is a document that exists. I think people will begin to start leaning on this, uh, um, opinion from council, uh, fairly heavily in the next few days. Um, but I think we should also, uh, review it closely and see if there's any things that, uh, that we have concerns with. One of the primary points that's made in here is that the, the, uh, the body that's essentially in charge of the decision about whether something is, you know, complying with or should be acted on by the town is ours. Um, so we are, according to their opinion, vested with the authority to make the determination. So I think we, we have to consider that carefully and, and think about, although it gives some, the council gives some, some, some examples, uh, that I think are helpful and illustrative. I think we, we wanna keep thinking about those things, and if we want to try to articulate other things we think about that may help us all, as we have issues and items come up over the ensuing months, that will help us in our, in our conversations about this, and try to keep, uh, the public informed about where we are in, in our decision-making about that, and, and clarify things. The other thing I will mention relative to this topic, um, town count, so motion review for town meeting is Monday morning. In advance of motion review, uh, town council, myself, the manager, and the moderator are gonna sit down and kind of go through this, this, uh, advice, and, and look at the current warrant that's before us. And then I'll be able to report back on that conversation and whether or not something, uh, came up in that conversation that, that warrant does need to, to think about or talk about in more detail. I don't foresee that, but we'll see. So, Mr. Steinberg?
Yeah, um, I do have to say one thing, we, uh, this is unanticipated, as you indicated. Uh, there, there's the problem of what happens if something comes up on the floor of town meeting in the form of an amendment that, uh, to a motion that then takes a article, um, and it makes, um, it, it takes it out of the purview of what we have been advised is appropriate. We will not be in a position to make an immediate ruling on it. Are we allowed to make a subsequent ruling on it, and even though town meeting has acted? And, uh, what is the role of the moderator? And I bring this up because I think that it is something, um, that needs to be clarified at the motion review meeting.
Absolutely, thank you for that.
And, uh, the, uh, specific example I will give, so, and I've given this also to Mr. Bockelman, is, uh, if there's a motion to amend a budget that would have the purpose of either adding or subtracting staff to a program that is a significant change in the operation of town government, and has a lasting effect, how does that, how, how do we deal with that particular kind of motion, should it happen to arise? We don't, we hope that it doesn't, but that's the question I have.
Yeah. So I will make sure to bring that up and, and try to get council to weigh in on that, and, and that it may be that moderator will have to, because he's moderating the meeting, will have to make a decision in the moment, relative to scope, like he does now. So that may be what we have, we get from them, but they may be able to give us some guidance on that as well. Ms. Brewer, do you have?
So along those lines, as an example, I can foresee a particular issue, for example, and I asked tonight if there would be any, and, you know, there's, it seems like there's always something. But in the past, we've had money added into community services on the floor of town meeting. How, what about that specific example? Because one, it's, it's happened before, so it's not exactly new, but it does speak to additional programming or staffing.
Right.
That's not in the budget. And so knowing ahead of time how to deal with that particular question, I think will help understand, because one of the things that I think has been so confusing for people as we talk to them about our warrant, is they say, well, why did you put those things in the warrant? It's like, because we're required to put them in there. And then it's up to town meeting with guidance as to what they act on. And there might very well be discussion where KP Law says, we don't think you should do this. But the moderator, for whatever reason, in addition to conversations you've had, or will have, will say, I'm gonna allow it. And then we have to sort out, when it's over, what that means. And so there, there, there are these different ways, different things could go. And so even if you're in complete agreement as to how every motion's gonna work on every article that's there right now, as Mr. Steinberg brings up, you know, a new thing could come up, which then could be also precedent-setting for other warrant items that we're working on. So how much of something is in isolation, because we've never seen it before? Um, and how much is something that we would be advised not to do, but that practically speaking, I'm hoping we don't spend a lot of time at town meeting arguing about whether or not to argue. I hope that if people feel that they wish something wasn't on the warrant, and they don't think we should act on it, even if we've agreed that KP Law thinks we can act on it, that they just don't vote for it, that they vote against it, or they vote for referral, rather than that they say, but it shouldn't even be on here, because that, like, it's there. So, but having some understanding of like a signal you're gonna have with the moderator or something, like when something comes up. And I wonder if we should have our meeting posted for the length of town meeting, rather than our pre-meeting?
Oh.
So that we would feel more able. I think there's been precedent in terms of understanding with open meeting law, that if you're sitting there at town meeting, you may have to talk to each other about something. But just to feel really above board, maybe we should post them as the whole time. Might be worth considering.
I can also ask that of council as well.
Because if, if they think we should, if they say, no, that precedent's good enough, then that's great. But if they think we should, then Finance Committee and Planning Board should do the same thing.
Right.
Because Finance Committee in particular might really be struggling with something that gets brought up. And normally they have to say, we can't talk about it, because we don't know, and then individual members just have ideas.
Right. Okay. So if you have additional, as you read through this and contemplate this memo a bit more over the weekend and the ensuing days, before the weekend, feel free to funnel those things to me individually. Um, don't send it to the whole group, and then we'll come back to this topic again on, on Monday night for a little bit, and, and allow, uh, that'll also allow Ms. Brewer to be available to have a conversation with us as well. But I think we'll wanna take this and, and help, I, I see it as a, that we may, without maybe formal action, we'll take, uh, this as a, as a framework, and perhaps, you know, flesh out a few more, uh, aspects of it to help guide us as we move ahead in the, in the coming months. So, Mr. Steinberg, you look like you have one other thing?
Uh, we just have Mr. Bonifaz's statement that we didn't pass. Uh, we just have Mr. Bonifaz's statement that we didn't pass out to members and there are two members not, not here.
So let's write Wald on one and write Brewer on one and give them to Mr. Zomek to put in their mailboxes.
There we go. That sounds like a plan.
At one order.
I'll just give them to him.
Well, here, I'll take one.
He can write the...
You've got one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they've got...
Okay. So I think we have now exhausted...
Is there one more, or is that all you have?
There should be one for Wald and there should be one for...
I wonder if he didn't give enough copies.
Maybe he didn't give us enough.
That's all right, I'll make copies for Mr. Bonifaz.
You'll copy?
Okay. So are we otherwise ready for another motion?
I am ready for another motion.
I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Yes.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is, if my phone will quit asking me for information.
10:12.
10:12. Thank you all, thank you. Amherst Media.